I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session held on Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Nuevo Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Fields, and myself, Council President Kritzer. We're also joined by Mayor Bernie. There are five items on the agenda tonight. The Old Firehouse Facility Recommendation, a Budget Update, 2025 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan Draft Document Review, Council Appointment Process, and Council Talk Time. So with that packed agenda, we'll go to the first item on the agenda, which is the Old Firehouse Facility Recommendation. Lorraine Hamilton, our Parks and Recreation Director, will introduce this item. Go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Lorraine Hamilton, Parks and Recreation Director here at the City of Redmond. I'm joined today by Lindsay Falconburg, our Parks Planning Manager, as well as Darcy Edmonds, who helped lead this engagement effort from Stepherson and Associates. Tonight, we will be updating City Council on the Stakeholder Group Engagement Process for the Old Firehouse Teen Center. I want to start by thanking all of our Stakeholder Group members and community members for taking the time to make your voice heard in this process. Our Stakeholder Group was a diverse group made up of eight teens, six service providers, five city commissioners, one facility staff member, three Old Firehouse alumni, one of our Old Firehouse music staff, the OFH founding director, a former council member, and two parents of OFH alumni. And so, we worked very closely with this group over the last few months. And tonight, we're going to be sharing the recommendation from the Stakeholder Group, and the council subcommittee will also share their insight at the end of our presentation. Oh, that was way too far.
You went to the end. There we go.
There we go. Just jumped to the end. So, this evening, we're going to go over kind of just a brief timeline as to how we got here today, review our process, present the recommendation and impacts, and then share what the next steps after this evening will be. So, this is just an overarching timeline. In April of this year, operations moved out of the Old Firehouse into the Redmond Community Center at Marymore Village. In July of 2025, we brought an expanded facility condition and the options, and we brought them here to City Council to seek direction on our next steps. From August through October, our Stakeholder Group met and went through a recommendation process led by Stepherson and Associates, as well as our Parks Planning Team, so that we could really, truly dive into the recommendation for the future of the facility to bring forward to you. Tonight, we are here to present that recommendation to City Council for direction, and then in Q1 of 2026, we would begin implementation of the received direction from City Council. In our last committee of the whole update, council requested information on facility usage for teen programs. Historical data, particularly pre-COVID, is not easily available due to the fact that most of that check-in and programs were done not within our technology systems. And so, a lot of those, that data is not as easily available. That being said, the hours and services for the Old Firehouse Teen Center have followed the school schedules and taken into account holidays and whatnot for the better part of its history. In the last two years, our data has gotten significantly better as we've implemented a Microsoft Teams or a Microsoft Forums check-in, and then recently moved into our Smart Rec, which is our recreation software for check-in. That check-in process has not always been adhered to strongly, yet this is kind of the best data that we are able to bring forward to City Council in line with the questions that were asked. The hours of operation prior to movement over to RCCMV was Tuesday through Thursday from 3:30 to 8:00, and Friday from 3:30 to 6:00. Some Fridays would also have live music. The services offered were drop-in spaces for after-school classes and mental health and behavioral services with Youth Eastside Services, or YES. YES also participated in the Stakeholder Group process. Our Redmond Youth Partnership Advisory Committee had a very strong presence in that facility, both meeting there as well as leading programming. And then, of course, our live music programming was one of the most popular and influential programs that we've had. In the 24 to 25 school year, our data shows 122 unique users. Staff stated that 10 to 30 drop-in teens were present daily. There was 31 RYPACK members, but 50-plus teens in the meetings. And then, live music events were two to three times a month and averaged 60 to 100 attendees, and these were all-ages events. We did not have registration or check-ins for the live music events. They were drop-in. At this time, I'm going to hand off to Darcy Edmonds and Lindsay Falconburg for the next two slides.
Thank you. Thank you, Lorraine. Sorry, not used to using mics. Thank you. So, yeah, so we had a six-meeting process essentially, and we started out with evaluating two options or presenting two options for recommendation. And those were to renovate or to rebuild. Over the course of the process, I think as the subcommittee saw, we started to hear feedback that made us realize that towards the end, it would be really, really helpful to add in an option to recommend the location as well later on in the process. A lot of topics that came up over the course of this process were the opening timeline for renovation and rebuild, as well as the importance of the location, the importance of it being a really teen-oriented space. And so, we heard a lot of really great quantitative, sorry, qualitative feedback, just values-based, really understanding the priorities of all of the Stakeholder Group, and especially the teen members and hearing from them what their priorities and needs are for whatever the future of the facility would be. Additional elements of this process included visioning. We did a lot of breakout group conversations, and we also tried to mix those up so that members got to hear from different perspectives and, you know, participate in different conversations with different groups. We used a process that you may have seen in the report called shorthand MODA. That is short for Multi-Objective Decision Analysis. You may have seen processes like this before called Multi-Criteria Analysis, or MCA. There's, you know, similar processes for this, but essentially, you define your criteria, right? Define your decision-making or recommendation-making factors, determine how important those factors are, and then determine how your options, in this case, renovate or rebuild, perform for those factors. So, that is what our group did over the course of those six meetings, and that was the quantitative aspect, as they would give scores regularly as part of this, and those scores did not determine the recommendation. They were intended to inform conversations and help the group better understand their own leanings. Let's see, anything else on that one? All right.
All right. So, of course, we wanted to get more voices in the mix than just our Stakeholder Group members, and so, we also conducted two focus groups throughout the course of this project. The two focus group sessions were held on October 22nd and October 24th at the Redmond Senior and Community Center and the Redmond Community Center at Marymore Village, as well as an online option on the 24th. And while there were two meeting dates, the content at both meetings was the same. We discussed the factors that the Stakeholder Group was working with, had the participants choose their top three, and also had a series of questions for each group based on Stakeholder Group kind of needs and curiosities to broadly gather sentiment about OFH and the future of the facility. There were 57 unique attendees over the two nights with 10 repeat attendees, and these folks represented teens, caregivers, parents, community members, OFH alumni, and service providers. And for the focus groups themselves, we split into affinity groups in order to have more focused conversations and smaller group sizes. We used the focus group feedback in two ways. The first was that we presented it to the Stakeholder Group in order to give them an insight into the wider community leanings and feedback, and they got to consider it as part of their process. And then, we also formulated it into a report, which was attached to the memo for you all to read directly from the focus groups to you.
One of the most powerful themes that the Stakeholder Group continued to return to is the impact the space and services at the Old Firehouse Teen Center have had since its inception in 1992. From teens finding their community services for mental health, social support, identity, to being a music venue for many of our region's various bands over the years, OFH has been a space of great value. As Darcy shared, that's one of the biggest reasons why location became such a large factor in the Stakeholder Group discussion, is because the building has held such significant value, but in addition, the location has held such significant value. And so, it was really important to the Stakeholder Group that the recommendation coming forward to City Council was rooted in the four values above. The title of this slide, Rooted in History: Built for the Future, came out of our Stakeholder Group process. Those were words that were said in our final group as we talked about how the recommendation was moving forward. The first is that the space would remain teen-oriented. It was a place that teens would use. It was discussed at length that if a teen doesn't want, if they don't identify with it and they don't want to use the space, they won't use the space. And so, it became really important to the Stakeholder Group that it was clear that whatever is built is something that is teen-oriented, that the space is welcoming and inclusive. It was discussed at length that the Old Firehouse Teen Center has been a place where all teens can find welcoming space and that they can find a community, no matter who they are, what they look like, or how they identify. A huge priority is to continue the OFH legacy. This was discussed mainly in regards to our music programming and performance space, as well as the drop-in space. It was discussed at length that the legacy of the Old Firehouse Teen Center, we didn't want to see that go away, regardless of what the decision was that was moving forward. And so, to continue the OFH legacy through both the space, but also the programming, was a high priority of the Stakeholder Group. And finally, imagining the future. It was agreed upon in the group that the Old Firehouse Teen Center, over the years, took the shape of the generation that was using it at the time. The programs, the services offered, even the look and feel of the space, sometimes the furniture, it reflected the generation that was currently inhabiting the space. And so, the desire of the Stakeholder Group was that the facility retained a flexibility of use, so that the future of teens could also see themselves in that space, regardless of how generations may change moving forward. And so, the Stakeholder Group recommendation, this is the language out of the report, is that the majority of the Stakeholder Group recommends rebuilding the Teen Center at its current location. Maintaining the existing site centrally located and accessible by walking, biking, and public transit is critical to ensuring equitable access for teens throughout Redmond and to honoring the history and legacy of the Old Firehouse Teen Center. The group's second choice is to renovate the existing building at its current location to preserve its legacy and open its doors sooner. Rebuilding at a new location is the least preferred option. A minority of our Stakeholder Group recommends renovating the existing Teen Center as their top choice. This perspective emphasizes preserving the original building spirit and history, reopening sooner, and upgrading the facility to meet accessibility and safety standards where possible. Our next steps with City Council is to look for direction from City Council to renovate or demolish the Old Firehouse Teen Center and enter design for a new facility. The potential decision point for this is next week on November 18th, 2025. Either path will create additional opportunities for community and stakeholder engagement to determine the design and recommendations for City Council as we move forward. A comprehensive timeline will be provided to City Council and the community on the next steps following direction, dependent on what decision is made. At this time, I'll hand it over to Council President Kritzer and the Subcommittee to share their insights in the process.
Thank you so much. And typically, I'll turn it over to the council for questions, but since I was appointed by our Subcommittee members to give a summary of what we did within the council Subcommittee, I'll share now. So, I think the three of us, Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Nuevo Camina, and myself, served on the council's Teen Center Subcommittee, and we were able to attend the stakeholder meetings, as well as meet with staff frequently between meetings to provide feedback on process and some of the reflections, since during the meetings, we typically were in listening mode. And we were able to convene after all of the process to be able to bring together some reflections that were shared amongst the three of us that I'll share now. So, first of all, I'll just say, one of the things I think we all reflected as part of the process was a great gratitude to everyone involved, from the staff and facilitators who really put so much energy into this, to especially our teens and the many stakeholders that were involved in the process, both those who were in the focus groups, as well as who were in the Stakeholder Group, and everyone who sent feedback in between. Many of us within the Subcommittee met one-on-one with a lot of different folks throughout this process to be able to listen. And one of the things that we reflected on was just that everyone involved in this had such a huge heart for community and such a deep love of the Old Firehouse Teen Center, and wanting to figure out how to get to a decision that was going to do right by both its legacy and its potential for future generations of teens, in addition to the ones that we have now. One of the things that we noticed from the Stakeholder Group in terms of the process, we had a mixture of teens and teen service providers and parents and others, as mentioned. And we saw a lot within the group, although there were some frustrations, and there was definitely feedback given, and we saw some pivoting based on that feedback, but there was also a lot of interest amongst the kind of generational discussion to be able to, I think, everyone wanted to make sure that when we got to this recommendation, that we would center teen voices. And often, when they come out of breakout groups, the adults would say, "The teens in our group said," or, you know, would ask the teens to report out, which was really cool. There was also discussion about, you know, how we make sure that we could do that even more, and how we could make sure to create safe-feeling spaces even within city processes for teens, so that they could feel most comfortable to participate. And I think one of the big things that we did see coming out, I'd say, two big themes that we heard as feedback from the group on process, and that we really did see the response on one, as mentioned, was around location. Because at the beginning, the rebuild was not going to have the group allowed to be specified whether they could rebuild onsite or not onsite, and the group basically couldn't come to a decision unless they knew that we could recommend that we rebuild onsite. And that that was really what kind of changed the discussion and brought the group to consensus, was having the option that we see before us. When that option wasn't on the table, it was really 50-50 split of renovate versus rebuild. So, that's something that I think is important when we think about this location piece of the decision. Also, visioning, I think, was a really important part of this process, and I think a great learning is just, you know, where we can fit visioning in throughout our processes going forward. We did it a little bit later, since there was a lot of learning upfront, but, you know, I think some of the feedback was just, "Give us more opportunity to vision together." And that's, I think, really a great thing as we move forward into hopefully, design. So, and I'll say, the big themes that we really heard were the themes you're hearing here, but I will just reiterate that we heard a lot was the importance of OFH's legacy of the, and the community sentiment. One of the things, as you'll see in the packet, that they rated on was community sentiment and how important that was, and that became tied to location as kind of the option, since when we change the building, it will change some things, but that location could keep some of that. And I think the other couple things that were really important was a desire to see it completed sooner. That was a lot of the discussion. And the longevity of the building. It was really interesting to see the group kind of grapple with the renovate versus rebuild, and we know about kind of the differences in longevity. And for the majority of the group, we saw that being a really important factor. I think one of the big things that was really cool in the visioning that we saw was really this opportunity, once when people got into discussion, to think about what could be the Teen Center of our dreams, and that instead of this, even though this has been a really difficult process, that potentially, the decision that we make as a council could provide our whole community the opportunity to build a Teen Center that is built for teens by teens, you know, continuing on that music legacy with, you know, a really, really good opportunity to build even more of the things we wish that we even had now. So, with all of that kind of bringing together, I'll say, we kind of thought about, based on the recommendation we got from the Stakeholder Group, but also pulling in, you know, some of the concerns to make sure that the decision the council will make will assure the community that we have some of the pieces around the expedience, around the music, and around the Teen Center aspect of it and the teen-centered focus. And so, as a Subcommittee, we came up with one sentence that we think we could pass, that we'd like to propose to the council next week as the direction to the staff that I think would give them direction to be able to move forward on this. And I will put it in the chat, but I'll also read it out loud, and then I'll also open it up, of course, for comments from my fellow committee members. But the sentence that we would pass, or a direction we would pass, would be, "Expeditely rebuild the Teen Center on the same location with music space to continue the Old Firehouse legacy." And I think our recommendation is to pass that, and specifically, to make the recommendation that the process be teen-centered going forward, and really to ask teens, as part of that process, to make sure that we find out the best way to work with them and who we should recruit for that future part of the process. So, that's a bit of a summary. I'll turn it over to my colleagues for any other comments.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that Council President, I agree with the recommendation from both the stakeholders and then the summary from the Subcommittee. For me, this process had a lot of initial structural problems. I think that, and it created frustration with many of the teens, and I'm not alone in thinking that, because they came to City Council week after week during this process and told you that they felt intimidated. They told you they didn't think that they were being listened to, and they told you they didn't, they weren't being heard, and they were frustrated. And sometimes, they were pretty explicit in the language they used. But, what I think did happen, two things. One, the facilitator and the group itself, I believe, sort of saved the day here. I, halfway through, or one-third of the way through the process, I was real clear in my recommendation to the facilitator in an off-meeting when the rest of the group wasn't there, that we need visioning. We are lacking visioning. We are worrying about feasibility, and we're worrying about functionality, but nobody has had a chance to express what they want this thing to be and look like. And the facilitator did pivot, and I appreciate that. And then, I also think the group itself sort of saved this process from itself, because they, in fact, the adults, did begin to listen to many of the teens, and they did begin to listen to the passion. And there were a lot of breakout groups that I happened to be listening in, and I actually watched the process unfold, and I watched the dialogue become better. It is unfortunate that four of the teens, four of the vocal teens who have come to us week after week, did not participate in the final recommendation because they were frustrated. And I don't really know what they believe or what they think about this recommendation, and that is an unfortunate process. One of the reasons we set up this Stakeholder Group, one of the reasons we set up this Subcommittee, was to establish, re-establish trust in the City of Redmond. What I hope to see is, as Council President mentioned, lessons learned, that as we move forward, once we vote on what we will be directing the mayor's office to do with this facility, we will still need a lot of stakeholder input, and I think it's essential. It's important. Anything else is failure. To listen to the teens, if we go with this recommendation, listen to the teens and listen to them in their voice, not try to facilitate how we think they should talk, or how they should speak to this. We need to take the time and listen to them in their voice when we talk about design, when we talk about possibilities, when we talk about programming. This is a jewel for the City of Redmond, has been for years. It's a rare thing to have a facility, in the way that we had it, dedicated to teens, and their input and their direction was vital to its success. And we can do more and do better, like many of the people on the Stakeholder Group said. I would like to see that as well. But if we move forward and we don't take the steps to regain trust and regain confidence that the City of Redmond will abide by their word and abide and listen to the public and listen to the residents, we're going to find ourselves again in a situation where we're not believed, and we don't have the confidence of the people who want us to do their work. So, I'm good with the recommendation from the stakeholders. I'm good with the recommendation from the Subcommittee, and I hope that council understands that this process was rescued by actions that took place during the Stakeholder Group, by the stakeholders themselves.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. Councilmember Nuevo Camina?
Thank you. In throughout this process, and really listening to what the teens not only want, but what they need, considering it was said earlier that the services needed to meet the teens where they are, taking shape of what the generation, the current generation, how they're using that space, and how do we meet them, one of the things that I strive to do is think about, what is the current immediate need? What could be the possible need in 20 years from now, and then coming generations, as this building has been in existence and has used for quite some time? And then, I think about, how has pandemic impacted, and what has the mark that the pandemic has put on our youth? Not just our teens, but the ones where it hit during preschool. We have yet to see that. We have yet to see how it's impacted those that were in early grade school. So, as I'm anticipating, what are going to then be the needs of those teens? I do not believe that, even in the prior version of the Old Firehouse and Teen Center, that it could possibly even come close to what the teens then are going to need. So, if what we had was doing okay, but we could have been doing so much more, then what is the future? And I'm, to be clear, I haven't yet said it yet, but I'm good with the current recommendation moving forward. But as I started, again, continuing to listen here, and then also talk to other teen centers to see, well, how are they working? It was very clear how influential the Redmond Old Firehouse was, in that a lot of the centers were taking our, what we had going as influence, and they were inspired by the things that we had going. So, but how could it continue to meet the needs of the teens was continuing to come back to me. So, in listening to our teens and community center, for me, it became clear, and I didn't know when to interject this into our conversation, but it became very clear that a nonprofit partner could help the Old Firehouse thrive in ways that the city alone couldn't. This model would strengthen the programming, expand resources. One of the things that we learned very clearly is that this is a regional resource, however, it's being funded by the City of Redmond. How could we then expand funding? How could we expand grant dollars? More importantly, how could we meet our growing neurodivergent community, our growing LGBTQ+ and controversial issues that could be seen as a liability for the city? But just because they're a liability for the city does not mean that the teens then should not be serviced in that way and not have those needs met. But how could we do that? For me, it was clear that having a model where we would have both a public and nonprofit partnership, it could be possible then. And it was when we started visioning, and I wanted to bring this up now, because as we are then thinking about, what could this be, and how could we better meet the needs of our teens, this continued to be a much bigger topic. I've got several topics, several talking points in there, where I'll be emailing those out, and they just kind of came, so I apologize for the last minute of it, but could be useful as we move forward.
Thank you so much. And I think to Councilmember Nuevo Camina's point, one of the things we heard was a lot of envisioning of beyond kind of what we've had. What else would we want? I mean, in addition to hearing a bigger kitchen, which came up quite a bit for the Teen Center, that everyone said, "Wow, that would be really great," also kind of this discussion about what other what other types of programming for different teen needs? What can we learn from the teen services study that we did as we go forward to think about that? But part of why I'll just note you see in the, in the recommendation that we put forward, we do put the, the focus, we include the, the note about music space because it's, it's not only music space, but ensuring, assuring our community that, that we do see the value that this space has provided as a, a place for music and, and its, its history around music and that that part is important while also open, leaving open the opportunity for us to kind of think bigger and think, and I think that's, that's the journey ahead. So, go ahead, Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Thank you, Council President, because I, I really, one thing I would be remiss if I didn't add on to this, was truly deepening the teen voice. And through a nonprofit partner, I feel then that that teen voice could truly be deepened, not just, just centered, but be, be that, that force moving it forward.
Thank you. All right, well, I'll open it up to the council. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into all of this and everyone who participated in any of the meetings, be it stakeholder meeting, be it focus group. Just appreciate all the, the variety of voices coming to the table and, and really caring and showing your passion for this project. I, I know it's not been an easy road, so just wanted to show my appreciation. I very much appreciate the subcommittee's distillation of a recommendation. I would want to push, push back a tiny bit and add, with a music focus and dedicated recording studio, just to, to that, I've, I will add it to the chat there. One thing for me through all my conversations with community that was really, truly made the teen center a gem was that recording space. And while it wasn't necessarily in the perfect space for it, it really was incredible for what people were able to get out of it. So I would really like to see that recording space continue and even have it opened up to broader community when the teens aren't using it. You know, there's, there's more than music that can be done in that recording space. There's podcasts, there's other conversations that can happen. And I just really see, future-wise, the ability for a dedicated space like that. And it's such a unique thing for this region to have that dedicated space. So I really want to make sure we don't lose that thread in this conversation. I would also want to see, as we talked about making the art in whatever this space is to look like, I would want to make sure that is primarily teen-generated art, making sure that our teens are there painting the walls like we did with the senior and community center, that our teens are putting forward art ideas and exhibits and, and those sorts of things to make it really have a sense of ownership over it. And then I'm getting way down in the rabbit hole on the next one here. I would love to see a historic marker dedicated to everything that has come from that space. We have some pretty big name bands that have actually come out of that space. So it would be really cool to honor that history. And when I was struggling with the timeline of renovate or rebuild, I kept coming back to the pool, the Redmond pool conversation and how many times we thought that we were going to just simply renovate and how many times that kept getting pushed and the budget kept expanding and then it would get pushed again for another reason. And that building was much newer than this building. So for that reason, I am good with the rebuild as expediently as possible. Hopefully, we can do a similar GCCM process where we're doing it as quickly as we can. But in the meantime, making sure that we're finding good spaces for our teens to continue with music recording, continue with performances, making them feel welcome and making sure that their voices are heard throughout this process and really bringing everyone to the table to ensure that, that we're getting, you know, this is a, this is a whole new big project we're embarking on potentially and making sure that it, it really is serving the community well for decades to come.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for the presentation and all the work that's gone on in this. I have a couple of questions and they're kind of getting to maybe some of the topics that my colleagues have mentioned. If we do this, Director Hamilton, this is a question for you, I think, if we do this, if we follow the recommendation, what are the thoughts that have been put into doing right by OFH in terms of closing down that building, preserving the artifacts? Can you tell us a little bit about the thought that has gone into that so far?
Absolutely. That's a great question. That's a little bit twofold. So one, there are a lot of posters and artifacts and things within that facility that we would want to preserve and keep. I know that there has been some conversations with the Redmond Historical Society on some of the ways that we can preserve some of that. But even within our own staff, as we have talked about what it would look like to rebuild a facility like this and honor the OFH legacy, in the showroom of the Old Firehouse, there is a wall of show posters and they are posters, right? So it's, there's always the question of how are those types of things going to transfer? And so there was the conversation of, do we have someone come in and, and take a high quality resolution photograph of that and, and do a screen printing of it? Do we put it on the wall of one of the, of the facility in the new space? Do we, like, what are the things that mattered to the teens in that space that we can pull in? And so while there are ideas that maybe staff have had or that have come out through stakeholder group conversations, that's also one of those things that gets really, for me, as we do these types of projects, exciting, where we can have these conversations of this is the thing that matters and then we have, you know, the teens as well as our designers being able to put their heads together to figure out what that could look like because there are people who are far smarter than I am at knowing exactly how that could look. And so the other piece that you asked is about how do we celebrate the facility? And we would want to make sure, the thing that I think people missed about the senior centers, we didn't ever really say goodbye. And part of that was because COVID hit and so we were unable to gather as those decisions were made. For the Old Firehouse, there have been conversations about having a celebration to just remember those things. I know the mayor and I have had conversations about being able to reach out to the various bands that have played there over the years to, whether it be put together a montage of a video or statements or something along those lines, to be able to just make sure that we really are preserving the things that happened in that facility because it has been so impactful to not just the people of Redmond, but to the entire region. And so those are things that we would embark on full throttle when a recommendation has been done. We have not done significant work on it because decisions haven't been made. So as we move forward, we'll be able to have those more robust conversations and of course involve both the community and council as we make those plans.
I have a second question. I'm going to ask the audience to please stay silent. There's not public comment at this meeting. Thank you. Just so that we can continue the business. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, did you have a follow-up question?
I do have a second question, if the chair will permit. Thank you. I'd like to, I'd like to hear more about the location factor and how that came about. It's really compelling, the, the way that that became such a factor. So I'm, I'm not arguing with the factor or the recommendation in any way in that, but the centrality of that location in a city that now has three urban centers that are developing, central for whom is always the question. So at any point in the conversation, were other locations on the table or was it just a nostalgia and deep love for the space, which I would understand as well, but just curious to hear more?
So other locations were not discussed because there weren't other locations that had been explored at that point. And so really, the original recommendation, like, or the original options were renovate or rebuild at a location to be determined and that could be onsite or it could be elsewhere. And so the conversation kind of went down the path of, well, if we don't know where it is and we would have to acquire property or lease property or what that would look like, I think the, the logistics of that got really difficult to grapple with in the, within the group dynamic because the fact is, is that we had a, it was a group of community members who had a deep investment in the space. So to then kind of say, you're going to make a decision, but you don't really know what that decision's going to look like, didn't, that was very difficult to get people to wrestle with, even though we, we were saying, if you were determined to rebuild, we would then do a secondary process to determine, is it onsite or do we look at other locations? We just, we got kind of stuck on that. The other piece was, is that the location was very deeply rooted for particularly the teens that currently use it. A lot of them are able to walk down from the high school. It is near public transit and near some pretty significant public transit lines. While places like the Redmond Community Center at Merrimore Village are on light rail, they are not as easily accessible. They are getting more easily accessible, but are not as easily accessible at this point. But I think the other one was, the conversation often turned to, well, if you can't guarantee us the building that we have, can you at least guarantee the location it's going to be at? Because that space being in the downtown core, because that's been where it's been, that's been that music venue for so many years, it wasn't just teens, it was, you know, former OFH alumni as well as parents and service providers were just really tied to that location. And that, we just kind of couldn't, that's just where the conversation kept going back to. And I think one of the most powerful things for me was to hear, they break out into small groups and there were some of the different commissioners or adults in the, in the room who didn't have a strong tie to the location, would come out of those breakout groups and really find solidarity with what some of the teens were saying because it was clearly so vitally important to them. And it was really interesting to see that group dynamic begin to, they really influenced one another throughout the process and I think that was really powerful to see. And like Darcy said, that's when that third recommendation really took hold is that location just kept coming back.
Yeah, I would just underscore as well that we did hear a lot from the teens, the importance of its location to, to Redmond High School. And, and I know that there are, we do have other high schools and we have other, other people living in different places around, but that, that ability to kind of connect there as well as to a lot of key transit lines. And, I mean, I will just say for the record, it is a good location. It's right next to the light rail. It's right there. Obviously, we have three urban centers. And I will note also, and I've been weighing this, this thought about the location as well, that I think it's publicly known that the Bellevue Family YMCA, which is on Bell Red Road, which is right, you know, next to or kind of right in our Overlake neighborhood, I'd say adjacent to it on the Bellevue side, is rebuilding. And I know they're going to be developing a teen center space or some, some teen spaces there. So I think we can think about, what are some of the different, like, regional resources as we think about all around? But that this one, just hearing from the community about how important that location is and especially from the teens, and we heard it from a variety of teens of, of why that location matters, I just became very passionate about it. So just will say that. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I think that what you just said is right. The, there were a lot of practical and pragmatic and objective type reasons to preserve that location for a future teen center, either renovation or rebuild. But I do think that there is a tie to that location, which then ties to the history that was created and the experience that was created. And it is a, an important gesture, if you will, by the city of Redmond to say, we're going to preserve that location because you, you have also asked us to keep it in the spirit and the, of the legacy of what was built. And I, I think if you, if we start going down the path of trying to find a more optimal location, there, I'm sure, as I've said many times throughout my tenure on council, you'll always find what you're looking for. So if you're looking for reasons to have it built somewhere else, you're going to come up with it. More reasons to do that than not. That's just how the human mind works. But you will also be saying, we can't be trusted because the location is in fact part of that trust. The trust that you will continue to work a teen center facility in the same spirit that has existed for many years. That doesn't mean that you won't have new ways of doing programming, doesn't mean you won't have private-public partnerships. It doesn't mean that you're not going to have, teach kids how to do their taxes or whatever someday. But if you, if you break from this recommendation because you find it, some argument about how it's going to be better or more optimal, keep in mind that you're breaking, again, breaking trust.
Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. One of the things that, that I was, I was hearing was the, the word, you know, can we guarantee that we can build on the same? I, I tend to take a look at what, what are the risks? And if we were to, like, can, can we make that guarantee? Or are there, are there things about that site that we're not aware of yet that could make that site not be usable?
At this time, we're not aware of anything that would put us in that space. Just like we talked kind of at length about the risk of renovation, there are things in the world that I don't know and I cannot predict. From what I understand about the zoning of that site, from what I know about the potential of density on that site, from what I know in conversations with our finance director and city leadership, all signs point to high potential for that site. It is, is where I would like to, you know, proceed to build a facility on. So nothing that I can foresee at this time.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thanks. I think I just, for, for my piece, want to say that I don't think many of us, if any of us, myself especially, have ever thought of rebuilding this entity, this very, very powerful legacy anywhere else in the city. I, I never even thought of it as an option to, to put the teen center anywhere else. I love that we're talking about preserving the history and what the meaning of it is to our community. It is a central location. It is very easily accessible. It makes sense that it's not far from the high school. Great to know about what's happening in Bellevue so that we have that additional context. I very much appreciate that. But I just wanted to say on the record, it, in my mind, it was never a question of where it would find its home. Its home is always going to be in that location in my mind.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. So we've probably taken enough airtime on this question. What I actually was hoping to do with my question was really confirm for community because there had been some, some feedback from community that, oh, we must want to sell this property and, oh, we must want to do these other things. And just it really, you've confirmed, Director Hamilton and the passion of my colleagues, that this is the right place. So I do support the recommendation. I also support the efforts, actually, that Councilmember Noeva Kamina mentioned around private-public support because in this very room, we have spoken with you, Director Hamilton, about probably it's getting time for a Parks Foundation. And that was a conversation we had hoped to have late in 2025, but it's been a really busy late 2025. So next year, that could come back around and, and I would see that to be a very natural part of the conversation. Lastly, I have one more comment here. Oh, it's not popping out. Oh, it was just regarding the specific motions. I very much understand the intent behind the original motion. I even appreciate the intent of the second offered by Council President Forsyth. My only, excuse me, Vice President Forsyth, my only caution is because we are so dedicated to the rest of the process being teen-led, that we adopt a motion that is supportive of a teen-focused rebuilding process on the location, but doesn't prescribe too much without, you know, giving that option really to the- without, you know, giving that option really to the to the stakeholders who will participate in that process. So from my perspective, I am ready to take action on this next week. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Stewart and Councilmember Forsyth pretty much just said what I wanted to say on a smaller issue. I think it's important when when people I want to address this issue of can you guarantee what they mean by that? And I've talked with many of the teens and other people from the stakeholder group. What they mean by that is that you'll guarantee your intent. I don't think there's anyone who thinks that if you if there is some technical block that that can't be overcome, that they're they're going to stand so unreasonable and say, well, wait a minute, you guaranteed it. That is not the spirit of what they're saying. What they're saying is they want you to guarantee that you're sincere about it. And I think that, again, Councilmember Forsyth described what I wanted to say about as we move forward. And I and I also appreciate what Councilmember Stewart said, that we need to put into this recommendation and the body of work around this recommendation, that it will in fact be a teen-led process. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, well, not seeing any others. It sounds like, I guess I'll just ask the council if we find we might wordsmith a little bit. I'll ask, are councilmembers good if we take the recommended language and perhaps add add in the dedicated recording studio aspect to the recommendation as kind of as what we'll put on the agenda for a vote on consent next week? And I can rewrite it. I think we have, oh, Council Vice President Forsyth had put that in there. Or I guess I'll go around and say, are we good with Council Vice President Forsyth's language? Do we want to see the kind of original language or anything else there? Because we can put that onto consent for a vote next week.
Councilmember Stewart.
I would suggest a brief rewriting that honors the intent of the first and the second around the music space. Maybe it's the music focus language from from the second. Because again, the other thing that's really important in that space is a performance venue for young people. So let's not get overly prescriptive, but definitely keep the music focus and happy to have that workshop offline.
Great. If the council's okay with it, I could brainstorm a little bit on how we we get this. But if everyone is good with the essentially what we have here, we can put it onto consent and update a little bit based on the feedback. I think specifically calling out some of those aspects, I will just clarify that it really is meant to be a minimum, not a maximum. So it's just to say, we will retain these aspects that have made this such an important space, not just for Redmond, but for our region. And so and to say that's going to be an important part, we also can envision so much more and that's that's going to be part of the process.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thanks. Yeah, I think also potentially adding a nod to and more in in whatever the the statement we put forward next week is because we, you know, for me, with music space was too minimal. But with the dedicated recording studio made it take a little more shape of that legacy. So yes, and I think for me.
Great. All right. So is everyone good if maybe I'll work with Council Vice President Forsyth on the final language unless you want the subcommittee to work on it. But we could just work on it as council leadership to get it on the agenda, probably be most expedient. I'm seeing a thumbs up from Councilmember Nuava Kamina, who's on the subcommittee. So I'll work with Council Vice President Forsyth if everyone feels good and we can get the language so that it can get on the agenda for next week's consent. Any other comments, Director Hamilton?
I just want to say thank you for the conversation. I think as you're talking about the recommendation, the only other thing I think that came out really strongly from some of the teens was the retention of drop-in space. And I believe what I said to that teen was, to me, to build a teen center without that space would be an incomplete project. That being said, that's how I feel about all of the things that you're discussing tonight when it comes to the music focus, the performance focus. Those have been central to our teen programming, to that space. And so that, as Councilmember Fields spoke to, that is the intent. That is our goal, is to rebuild on that same site with all of those things in mind, making sure that the process is centered on teens and the needs for the future. So thank you all, and thank you to the community who went on this process with us. We look forward to the next steps.
Thank you. And with that, we'll close out this item. The next item on our agenda, I'm just going to pull my notes back up here, is a budget update. We have our finance staff coming up here, so I'll give them a moment. So introducing this item, we have Kelly Cochran, our finance director. Go ahead when you're ready. Should we give you a minute? We did a quick transition there. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So thank you for meeting with us this evening. There are several items that I'm here to update you on regarding the budget, hoping to get through the first three items as efficiently as possible so that we can spend the majority of the time discussing House Bill 2015 and any questions or concerns that you may have regarding a recommendation there. So I'm going to start off with the service enhancements and update on where we are with those packages. If you recall, we put those together in the form of packages for the budget. So I'll provide you with a mid-biennium check-in. It will tell you off the top that things are looking really great. The number of FTEs that are still remaining to be hired of those that were approved in the budget is sitting at 14, which is sort of what we expected. Many of those are not proposed to start until next year, 2026 anyways. So our first enhancement package is one that was focused on planning for the city's utilities, mostly the capital investment program. And you'll see that we have indeed hired the planner there. And there are a couple of the plans that are already complete. You see that they are completed without any dollars spent, and that's because they were able to get those planning efforts done under contracts that they already had. So we were able to move pretty swiftly on a couple of those plans. The second one is regarding the cost recovery components of the parks program. Again, we've got two positions hired. I believe that you met with the volunteer coordinator last week and were able to hear what is planned there. And both of these studies are now in process. In fact, I think park impact fees just recently came through. Environmental sustainability, there is an ongoing component. There is hiring for three FTEs. The third one there is just recently filled, so no costs have accumulated yet, but we do have that person coming in through the onboarding process. All work, all ongoing efforts have begun except for two that are slated for next year. And with the one timing, one-time investments also making progress, expecting a couple of more efforts to kick off in the beginning of the year. Package number five is a is the Comprehensive Community Response Program. There are a couple of items here that I just want to touch base on. The police officer positions, there are four that were approved in the budget. Two, you will recall, are incumbent on securing at this point funding from Sound Transit, and that has not yet materialized. Of the other two positions, we are we have hired one and there another is in the process. Let's see here. The other position for the mental health professional, that is on hold as we wait to see how our partnership with King County Behavioral Health goes. And that is also then impacting a couple of other positions that are falling on the next slide. For the two social workers, as well as some of the training dollars that were set aside for the mental health professionals. So those expenditures are still budgeted, but we are holding on before filling any of those in order to make sure that the program we have partnered with will work. Fire and medical apparatus, we have been able to secure the mechanic for the fire fleet shop, and they have moved forward with a number of equipment purchases. They are evaluating still the need of the staff vehicle for fire prevention, and so that is currently on hold. Our DEI program, we have the specialist position that is currently on hold until 2026, when we expect that the ready plan will be available for implementation. And we also have the language access support work has not yet started. As you are aware, Public Works is doing a lot of work to clean up their code and get it in alignment with Public Works' best practices in order to get their accreditation process completed. Once that is done, then they'll go back and take a look at this the code from this perspective and make the adjustments that were planned. In-house legal, as you are all aware, we've hired Rebecca Mueller as our city attorney, and it's been great to have her in that spot, planning to fill her deputy position next year. We have retained Ogden Murphy Wallace as support for us as we are onboarding Rebecca, and I would assume into the future as well as, you know, they are very specialized in taking care of a lot of our business. But they have moved into their space and onboarding is going great. So from the cost perspective, our cost recovery side, we have hired one of the grant administrators. I'm hoping that you'll have an opportunity to meet with her soon. She's done a tremendous amount of work to create really a citywide grant management program. And it's done a lot to get us organized and really focused on what our opportunities are and how to take advantage of them in the most efficient way. The only thing that's really on hold in this package is dollars that were budgeted for a potential refresh for the public safety levy, not really knowing at budget time that we would be able to make the progress we did in the funding for the levy. So all is really moving along well. For technology, what's happening in the TIS department, they've been able to fill two of the ongoing positions that support our data and innovation work, and they are planning on filling the third position at the beginning of 2026. All other work is in process and supporting current projects. Again, all is going well in the investments that we're making to secure support for the operational and security work that is done within the TIS department. The one thing that is sitting on hold right now is a contract with Sentinel One. There has been some changes in how that vendor is operating, which has kind of made us pause and desire to kind of take a look at what some of our other options are before moving forward. So I'm sure that there will be a solution in place, but it may not be this one. Facilities strategic plan work, we are in process for both of these. I do want to acknowledge that there is a typo on this slide, and the amount spent on the engagement for the community center work is at 125, not 150. We won't be taking that out of Director Hamilton's paycheck yet. Okay. There we go.
Was that 125, not 175?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. The World Cup is well organized, a lot of synergy going on in that team, a lot of good plans. I think that we'll be able to deliver what was intended to the community next year. All is in process. Hiring's been taken care of, and that team is really making really good progress. Economic development, very thankful that we've been able to hire a program manager there. We have nearly all of those efforts ongoing right now, and we are we do have a hold on the home base business survey. I cannot recall why that is on hold, and if you need me to follow up with that, I certainly Tourism, implementation plan, this is to implement the strategic plan that was developed for tourism. They I know that there was a visit recently with you, with Jackie Lawler, as well as Philly Marsh, to talk about how well their year is going. All things are going as planned here. Quite a bit of the spending will come to support World Cup next year, but we don't anticipate any problems with delivering what was intended. And infrastructure management, there's been two key positions hired to help us plan for and maintain mobility on our roads. We are doing an update to standard designs. I've seen some work getting started recently, and I believe that there will be something coming through council early next year. You know, as well, the other two one-time planning efforts are in process and anticipated to be done soon. Parking enforcement, their parking plan is near complete, and we are working towards that transition of managing our parking program and the enforcement of that in-house. And I'm not anticipating delays to conceptually what we've planned. I am not sure of the alignment between where the parking plan and recommended and what was intended, but I have not heard that there is any type of redirection from what we were working on. This is the last bit of the update on service enhancements. Any questions on those?
Yeah, I was going to have us pause there. There was a lot of information. I'm sure there's a couple of questions here. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. The two service enhancements that I could not locate, and I it just might be different nomenclature. The first is the data governance project that council was very passionate about in how we enterprise-wide will be managing data. The other is it'd be interesting also to see this in in a way that organizes around those $1.3 million in budgeting for equity. But one of the budgeting for equity enhancements that I could not locate was the communication that the I believe is a technical solution, it was like around $10,000, but a technical solution that breaks down barriers of communication during emergencies. It was a fire proposal that was funded. I was not able to locate it here.
I know what you're talking about, and I will double-check with you and follow up. The data governance piece, I will follow up as well. I do know that there has been a citywide team formed. There has been a consultant that has been secured and interviews that have done with been done with each department to sort of talk about the different types of data. So work is currently going on, but I'll double-check on those items.
Thank you. Yeah, we, the council, we I remember us approving the contract. I thought we were expecting that work to be completed by the end of the year.
So work is currently going on, but I'll double-check on those items.
Thank you. Yeah, we, the council, we, I remember us approving the contract. I thought we were expecting that work to be completed by the end of the year, but I could be wrong. Thanks.
Other questions from council members on those slides? I have one, more of a comment about a couple of the items that are showing up there that are on hold, and more that I think as council, I'd like, I would request that we prioritize discussion early in the new year on a couple of these topics to make sure that council has clarity and discussion with the administration on the plans around this. The first is around the MHP and the social workers. My understanding on the MHP was that we were hiring one, and it was, it was hard to find, find one that had kind of for the MHP specifications, but then we would be seeking the next one, and not that that was as tied to our new partnership with King County. I also think it would be good for us to circle back. I know the subcommittee was going to be doing some work, and maybe Council Vice President Forsyth can weigh in on this. But that, that we actually could talk about what we might want to do to add even additional capacity in our city, since this was a priority in our budget. Go ahead, Council Vice President.
Thank you. Yeah, the subcommittee did have a chance to meet with the staff and talk about what outcomes we've seen with that new county program, and we just don't have enough data yet. So the current recommendation from the subcommittee and from staff is that we keep that position where it is for now, and we get more data in the first quarter, maybe early second quarter, and then bring back the conversation to see what those needs are, how that program is supporting, what our efforts are, if we potentially pivot, and then we just have that conversation again to, in that, in that first or early second quarter.
Great, thank you. Because I do think there's opportunity, for example, for us to re-envision. You know, we saw how much we moved the needle, and we added the three community care coordinator positions, and if we want to be creative about where that, that is needed, and we have already kind of added additional budget capacity to think about that. So appreciate that, and we'll see that back early next year. The other area that I think we had a conversation around several months ago with Anita Page about the work, and Dr. Thompson, about the work that's been going on, on our ready But the fact that both our DEI advisor positions, plus this new program specialist position to support them, is still vacant, I think, is, is a real challenge for our community in this moment, when having someone who can be an external-facing support for our diverse community is more important than ever. So I just want to put out there that I really think we should prioritize a conversation on those positions, what we'd like to see, and hopefully get those hired as soon as possible in the new year. If we need to bring Anita back, I'm looking at the mayor, but would like to follow up on that conversation with specific actions, so we don't see these positions stay vacant. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thanks. Yeah, we are on it. So yeah, it's part of, we have finished the ready plan, and it's part of figuring out what that job would be, or those jobs would be, and so that is on our priority list to get hired first thing in the new year.
Great, great. And maybe we'll, we'll have you come back to talk with council about it, it'll be wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, both of these are really important, and I'll say on the DEI, or excuse me, the ready positions, we, the council did get an email update a while ago from COO files. One of the questions I've gotten a lot in community is if that second position will be external-facing, and I had an email exchange with the COO confirming that the positions are staying in the executive office and that the second one will be externally facing. So in the, in the short term, I think that is welcome news for the community who's been asking that question. Just to go back to the public safety enhancements, thank you for the update from the subcommittee. Just to, because I know later in this presentation, there's a proposal to raise new revenues, I just want to summarize at this point to say, the costs that are on hold, revenue, or dollars that we are not spending while that evaluation takes place, means that we have $594,000 not being spent, but we are on track to collect $690,000 in revenue. That is across the business taxes and the utility taxes, per the latest reports and some additional questions that Director Cochran. So we are, we are collecting even more than what is currently on hold, and as we get later in the presentation and the conversation tonight, I just, that's something that's important to me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one last point on the DEI position, specifically on the external-facing aspect that Councilmember Stewart brought up. When Councilmember Stewart and our now previous Councilmembers, Solahu Dean and I, met with a variety of our community-based organizations around, that serve our immigrant communities, one of the big asks that they asked of us was to have someone at the city who could be their go-to person. And so I do think, even if we don't, I'll just say to the, to the mayor, as we think about scoping those positions, even if it actually might take us a little while longer to find that DEI advisor, that kind of, the higher-level kind of director position, if we, if we could hire someone that could be able to do some more of that community engagement now or sooner, I think that's going to go a long way for our community. So I just look forward to that conversation. I'll stop here for that. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments, or should we let our finance director continue? All right, go ahead.
All right, let's dive into performance management. A couple of things that I wanted to touch base with you on here was an update to our outcome maps and moving that through a council process for review, as well as the development of a performance report that we had touched base on earlier this year. Director, our deputy director, Nora, has recently kicked off a process with the deputy directors team and the budget analysts to update each one of our outcome maps. So there is an outcome map for each of our budget priorities, meanings, there is four, and they will be updating the desired outcomes, the dashboard indicator measure, the program and department measures that roll up to them, as well as the objectives. We plan to have that work in front of council. It'll be at the end of the last study session in January, and then the first study session in February. We had to make some changes to dates that were in a little bit later in the presentation. But our desire is to bring those revised outcome maps for council feedback, and then that will feed into the exercise for what we are now calling our community results team instead of a civics results team. So just to kind of remind you what the outcome maps look like, they start off with kind of a declaration of what the community's value statement is in the top right-hand corner, and then declare the outcomes where the baseline budget offers, and asking, go to the next slide, asking the community results team to help us prioritize those. So they will provide feedback on the outcome maps. They will also then prioritize the baseline budget offers in terms of value to them within each of our budget priorities, and will make sure that that exercise can roll up to sort of the whole budget, and you'd be able to see sort of the priority of our services when it comes to feedback from the community results team. So we are hoping to have that effort taken care of in the March to April timeframe, and then in the March to April timeframe, and then be able to bring that feedback back to council in probably May. The other thing that we're working on is a performance report. So we had discussed earlier this year that, you know, we usually, we always close the circle with a report back on the financial performance, the fourth quarter, but we don't close the loop really on performance. And so we've put together a draft that was attached to your council materials that was put together in collaboration with the communication group, that really says in words what it is that we're trying to achieve, why it's important, how we know, how we measure it, and what the results were, and then how those results fed into budget decisions. And so there is a draft that's been attached. We've, I'm not sure if council has had an opportunity to look at it or had any feedback for us, but our plan is to continue with the development of that and incorporate them into the study sessions planned for next year, when you'll be sitting down to talk to the departments about their baseline budgets and how things are going. We will incorporate an overview of the performance in the last budget to, and make that connection to where we are now. So that is our plans there. I'm excited, working with the communication group, they always make everything look so much better and more exciting than I can, and I think that it's doing a really good job to, to document what's going well, what's not going well, and what we intend to do about it in the future. Any questions about sort of the performance management components of the budget or our plans? Lots.
Sorry, can you clarify, you, you mentioned, and I saw a hand up over there, can you, you mentioned about the performance measures, and I think we've discussed a couple times about when is the moment when we revisit what are the measures that we want, and whether there are any changes to those measures? Can you clarify when you're envisioning that conversation happening?
That will be with the outcome maps. So our deputy directors team, budget analysts are working on a revised outcome map, basically bringing to you what they would propose as the measures, and from there, we'll be able to take your feedback and make some adjustments.
And that'll be like Q1?
Yes, it's the end of January, early February, for those two study sessions.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Noava Kamina.
Thank you. Director, my question is part of, of this part of it, and then jumping back to the presentation that we had been on before. For anybody who's at home following along with this, when we take a look at what the budget was versus actuals, there's a considerable discrepancy between the two, like there's, there's a big jump. So we budgeted a much higher amount, the actuals haven't yet been there. So when we take a look at performance, can you just speak to, for anybody listening and following along, why and how, other than we're not in 2026, but if we were to double it, we're still very far below, say, a 50% or half of what we've budgeted?
There, thank you, yes. There was intention in some of that. So we approved 44 positions and clearly could not undertake hiring of all of those. So there was a phased approach to hiring FTEs. That is a huge amount of the cost for the city. It's about 80% of our budget is driven by FTE costs. So there's, that is a portion of it. Another reason is that you will see, it takes a bit to get contracts in place to help with some of the studies and work like that, that's being done. So there is quite a few efforts that are just coming through the contracting process right now, and we expect, expect to be completed in 2026. I, I expect that we will, for especially the service enhancements, we will exhaust what was planned. You're welcome.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I have two questions. I'm unclear on, well, first of all, I'm very excited to get to the work of reviewing the, how do we know this budget is a success? That is a conversation that has come up in nearly every council retreat I've ever been a part of, and we're very excited to get to it. Do the outcome maps talk to the performance report, or is the performance report a backward-looking element? That's my first question.
Be a backwards-looking element.
Okay, so the outcome map is how we're going to evaluate the budget we're currently, like drafting, performance report looks backwards. That's helpful. My second question is, back to the community results team. What are our plans for generating greater engagement in that, and how will that be different in the coming year versus the previous biennium?
When, typically, when we do the work like that we've proposed, where they're really kind of sitting down and validating, providing pretty targeted feedback, we will work with EMC, the consultant that helps the city do the community survey. They have conducted focus groups for us before, and they do a great job of getting representatives to the table for us. So that is our hope coming into this budget process.
So I think what, what we would expect then is some kind of all-call similar, if we go back to budgets, to a format similar to that. I think that that team plays a really critical role. I also think that the, the organization, the City of Redmond, learned a ton through Redmond 2050 about the kinds of feedback when we can get, when we meet community where they are. And so there are some, especially when it comes to service enhancements or possible reductions, we've been lucky of late, we've mostly been in a positive conversation, but there may be questions that it's important to take to community-based organizations with trusted partners that we have been developing these relationships with.
So let me say that this is as far as we've gotten in our planning. I can't believe that we are this far this early in the process. There will be more developed, more plans developed as we get through additional parts of the planning process. We have not yet planned the overall identification of service enhancements beyond those that are identified for '27, '28, and there will be a component there, we just have not figured that piece out.
Great, I don't see any other questions. Why don't you continue?
Okay.
Oh, Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. You know, I think we've come a long way, and I know, I know the struggles, I know the process that you've gone through, Director Cochran. Getting a new system in place obviously created a lot of opportunities for things like measuring and performance management, and we're getting ever and ever closer to performance management. So I appreciate what you've done. But what I really want to say is, I want to take this opportunity, since, and this is a personal opportunity, since this is, will be my last back meeting in my career as a city council member, I wanted to say to you, Director Cochran, that you have been a joy to work with, you have been an amazing asset to the city, and what I really appreciate is that you show respect to everyone at all times. You do it with humor, and you do it with confidence, and I have really enjoyed and appreciated working with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields, and I feel the same.
Well, on that note, proceed to the next section, thanks.
I'm very excited about the next section. So I shared with you during the budget process that reading the long-range financial strategy and working through an update for the last budget process left me very eager to really make some significant changes, because we have essentially transformed since the long-range financial strategy was first implemented in 2005. And for those that don't know, the long-range financial strategy is really the framework that we utilize to make sure that, first of all, we know what the community needs, what they expect, what they are looking for, and that we also have the tools available to make sure that we are able to sustain those services for a long time. I think one of the most important policy decisions that city council makes is finding that balance between the service levels and the financial impact on the community. And this is really, the long-range financial strategy is really about how do we find that balance, and how do we utilize the tools that we have. The communications group helped me put together a graphic that visualizes how I see the city. And there is a lot of intent in ensuring that we are community-informed, informed in how we budget, informed in how we plan, informed in how we adapt. And so at the bottom, you'll see there are programmatic plans. There's a variety of them, these are just the ones that we picked, there's hundreds. But they all, at this point, have an element of community feedback. There really isn't a time when staff can come to council and say, I did this huge update, and not be able to answer, what did stakeholders think, what did the community think? It has become embedded in who we are. That then, those plans roll up into some of our other, what I consider guiding documents, the capital investment strategy. the capital investment strategy, comp plan, community strategic plan, long-range financial strategy, some of which also have a community input focus on them as well. That then, those then guide how we budget and how we develop our six-year CIP. So for me, when I was a child in 2005 and the plan was adopted, that's just not what we, that's not what we looked like. And when we first started, the connection to community input was initially made to the budget process. And that was a great place to start. People had a lot to say, but it's kind of late. Like, it's the budget. So you can tell us what you think, but it's not as impactful as getting folks involved in those essential planning elements. And so I wanted to just demonstrate to you that this is really the framework that the long-range financial strategy has embedded. So when working through the update, I have some recommendations that I've put into the draft that was provided to you. So, excuse me. I would like to give council, you know, a few months to review the document, provide feedback, and we can come to some kind of a final draft in early spring, and we'll keep the item open until budget adoption, in case there's anything else that we want to add. But the original document had five guiding principles. At one time, I had us up to 14, and I felt fortunate to be able to cut us back to 10. But these are really the things that if someone comes to me with a budget need, these are the questions I ask, these are the cross-checks that we make, this is the alignment that we look for. So these 10 principles have become integral into decision-making for us. Excuse me. The philosophies have, can I?
Do you want to take a minute?
I might need a moment.
Yeah. Let's take, let's take a quick pause for a sec here, not an official recess.
I'm all choked up about the long-range financial strategy. So very passionate about it. Drinking Haritha's tea. Thank you, it's really good.
We're glad you care so deeply about our financial strategy.
My poor staff is so sick of me talking about this, but I get very excited. So when it comes to the philosophies, I really haven't recommended anything other than some wording changes. The two philosophies that the long-range financial strategy are built upon is that essential balance that council needs to find between our service levels. Oh my goodness, I need like two minutes. Sorry.
We'll take a, we'll take a two-minute recess until 8:37. Ed, we're back. We're talking long-range financial strategy with Director Cochran. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Sorry for the interruption. The, so the two philosophies are essentially finding that balance of what we're providing and the financial impact on the community members, as well as being very intentional about our revenue structure. So I've just tried to clarify, make the philosophy statements just a little bit simpler, but concept is still the same. So the next is our strategies. And this is where I really had quite a bit of fun, I would say, because to the left, where we currently are, is the strategies that were developed as the long-range financial strategy was built over time. We started with, as I said, community-based budgeting. It became, the budgeting by priorities process became sort of the first item that was implemented as part of the long-range financial strategy. Then we came along with the price of government and started then building out the revenue philosophy, and so on and so forth from there. To the right on what is proposed is essentially the different strategies, the strategies that if I was to advise another organization that wanted to mimic what we were doing, this is the order that I would advise them to do it in. First comes the community investment plan. Previously, this was known as the price of government, and I'm recommending that we evolve that to be the community investment plan, because I think we have come to a point where conversation is no longer about the price, but it is about the value. And so I want to recognize really that transformation for us. Also, the metric also was known as price of government, and we have reframed that as the community investment rate. Still the same measurement, but a different way of looking at it. The community investment plan essentially sets the boundary for which we can financially operate. If, if our, if the rate is too low, that means that we are likely not offering the services that our community needs. If the rate is too high, we will, you know, have likely pretty upset community members and deal with tax revolt. So it sets the boundary for us. The revenue policy comes after that, and it declares the types of revenue mixes that council is looking for, the types of policies we want. That's where we talk about the cost of service methodology that we use. That's where we talk about the 1% property tax. It's where we acknowledge that our community members are also burdened with taxes and fees from other jurisdictions as well. So it kind of encompasses that. And then from there, it really is all of those elements that you need in order to make sure that you are staying within the capital, or within the community investment plan and utilizing those, the revenue framework. So I've added some new elements, such as the economic development strategy, which is new, and added a suggestion that we look at our technology investments a little bit longer out into the future, so we can mimic what the CIP does. So some suggestions and ordering. I have also called out some areas where we are still improving and spoke to what our plans are there. So performance measurement, as Councilmember Fields mentioned earlier, is still an area that we are involving, evolving, and improving, and that's been acknowledged in there. We have also added some appendices, or some of them, we have simply pulled out a lot of content from the middle of the report and moved it to the end, so it's a little bit easier of a read. Others, we felt like it was valuable resources for council. So those are all there for you to take a look at. I plan to revisit with council January FAC, as well as February, March, whatever it takes to make sure that we're all comfortable with this update.
Thank you. I'll pause here just in case councilmembers have any questions or thoughts about the long-range financial strategy before we move on. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I just want to say, like, especially the last couple of slides and seeing your proposed moving forward recommendation and hearing you frame it as, this is how I would frame it if it were an outside entity coming to us for advice, this makes so much sense compared to when I first started and trying to wrap my head around all of these different things. And I think, I don't know if it's just because I've been here a while now, or if it's just because you've actually made it make so much more sense and bring clarity to it. So I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that clarity, and your passion for this definitely shows through. And I just really appreciate seeing this very clearly laid out and the thought and energy that went behind it. I would also add that the, getting your vision of how you see this, the community-formed plans and budget graphic, I think it could go a long way if we share this graphic out on our socials and share kind of the distillation of what you, how you framed it, to build trust in government, trust in process. If we can get this message out there, maybe it ends up in a focus newsletter, gets out on socials, but it, it really does show the thoughtful work that happens on all the levels and how it builds upon each other, that we're not just making these decisions without informed decisions, informed plans. It's just, it's really refreshing to see it all in one location. So thank you.
Mayor Burden?
Yes, I love that graphic. I might have like jumped out of my seat when Kelly shared it with me, because it felt, I felt like it pulled together all the things that I've been trying to articulate about the budget is just this end result of all this other work. And I think she just did, she and her team just did a beautiful job of showing how it's not just the budget process where we get input. It really is all along, and the budget is informed by our community through all these different ways. So, well done, Kelly and team. But I agree with you. I think it's a very simple way to show how much we value the community in getting to where we are with the budget and everything else we do.
Councilmember Noava Kamina?
Thank you. Director Cochran, earlier, I don't believe that you were in here for it, but I had made a comment about Redmond being about head and heart, and I just want to commend you on embodying that and having that show through this, because while we can very quickly get lost in the weeds of numbers and budgets, you're also able to give context and storytelling about it to make it a lot easier for our community and for us to come along in the process with it, to where it tells a story about where this is going, even if, as you had said, if it's a reframing of something as a community investment plan, to, you know, what is it from going into value, being value-based and less transactional. So, yeah, thank you for doing that, and I'm looking for, since the last budget was my only to go on, and now that went well, and now I'm looking forward to this budget cycle as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I'll just echo that I think this is fantastic. I really love these updates. In particular, I do love, it seems to be threaded through all of this, but this focus on invest, from price to value, thinking about investments and what we get out. You know, government creates public goods, and public goods are the things that the private market doesn't naturally kind of create for us, and the way that we get those goods is by all of us pitching in and all of us investing, and then getting those goods out together that we all get to share. And that's, that's really what we do, right, in our budgeting? And I love thinking about that as like this big investment pool, and then we all get to reap the returns on that investment together. And we got those investments as the council, so just getting philosophical here, but I'll pass it back to you.
It's exciting.
It's exciting, yes. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Just one more silly thing. If I never hear the term "price of government" again, I will be very happy. I love that you have reframed this as community investment plan. It is so much more clear, it makes so much more sense, and it's not this thing that you're trying to wrap your head around. So I really appreciate that reframing.
Thank you. I look forward to conversations early next year and then get it buttoned up until the next comp plan in 2070.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Fiscal policies are coming right behind. This effort really started with our financial planning manager and the analysts. They each took on a section of our fiscal policies, did a lot of research about, you know, where we should be best-practice-wise legally, and they have documented their recommendation. That is going through review with Haritha and I right now, and we have also our purchasing and accounting managers working on some of the policies that come from their areas. So we plan to have this document to council early next year. Again, we'll, we can, you know, get hopefully to a place of agreement, and we'll keep it open until budget adoption, in case anything else gets added in the meantime. So this is the big one. Saved it for last. So House Bill 2015 is the next thing that I would like to talk about. This is a significant opportunity that has been made available to us by the state legislature, essentially to help cities deal with funding for criminal justice programs. There are quite a few requirements with it, and we'll go over those in a moment. There we go. We've provided some general information about the sales tax. We essentially have until 2028, June of 2028, to implement with a simple process. It's incredibly important that we speak to our community, so I'm not suggesting that we pass that, but it does administratively is easier to implement at this point than it would be later. The funding mechanisms, there is a grant, and there is also the ongoing sales tax increase. And they do play on each other. So in order to implement the tax, you need to be able to qualify for the grant. In order to qualify for the grant, you have to have an existing criminal justice tax. We do have an existing criminal justice tax that is not of our own, but it is a shared revenue source that we receive from King County. We receive about $500,000 to $600,000. We receive about $500,000 to $600,000 annually, but it does allow us to qualify for both of these funding mechanisms. There are also other qualifications that are necessary in regards to training, staffing, policies. And I've shared these just to let you know that the city does meet all of these qualifications. So we then are looking at sort of, you know, where, where is it in the city that we have eligible expenditures that meet the intent of the legislation? When it comes to the grant, as you can see, I've sort of put those into buckets. Of course, any recommendation for, from me for a grant would be to tie it to one-time expenditures. So I would not be, you know, recommending that we tie staffing or anything like that to the grant. But if we pursue it, I think it is a good mechanism for equipment, software, and some of the other things that we are currently in need of when it comes to administering our criminal justice programs. The police department, since 2007, has not seen a lot of growth. And in fact, five of the 135 positions that are noted up there are new as of 2025. So we've been sort of maintaining the same level of staffing while we've seen a steady increase in our population. And this has been a concern of Chief Lowe and previous chiefs that we are behind in the level of our staffing. Chief Lowe has provided us some information on where he receives information about what the appropriate level of staffing is. And really, any of the associations or studies that have been done suggest that we are behind in the level of staffing that we see. The staffing is only one component of where we struggle when it comes to fully implementing some of the criminal justice programs that we would like to have in place. And some of the things that we are struggling to do or desire to do that we have not been able to is, you know, maintaining that frontline connection with the community through engagement and some of our prevention programs. We're seeing existing technology become more expensive to replace. We have new types of technologies that are needed to fight new kinds of crimes. And we have some outside costs from our jail vendors or from the King County Court for probation services that are expenditures that are going to increase on us no matter, you know, what we do to try to control them. Police Department has done a really good job of absorbing this for a while, but it prevents us from providing the community, I think, with what is really expected. One of the things that is always important to me, as talked about in the earlier section when it comes to the principles piece, is this continuous improvement or innovation sort of expectation. I am not one to put resources towards a program if I feel as though there is waste or there is inefficiencies. And these are just some recent acknowledgements that our police department has received for efficiency improvements that they've made or innovations that they've made in order to provide us with services with still maintaining relatively the same number of staff that they have for almost 20 years. When I originally brought this topic to F A C, I was asked to come back and speak to the value that these additional revenues would bring to the city. And so I have put that conversation into some buckets, and the first one being the obvious, which that it's an incredible influx of revenue to the, to the budget. And that does a few things for us. It allows the criminal justice programs to grow without having to compete with other priorities of the city, without having to reduce some of their other programs in order to launch new ones and really, I think, provide a new baseline for the city when it comes to those services. There are a couple of revenues that I think it also gives us an opportunity to reconsider. There was two revenue increases or revenues that we implemented in the budget process. One was a increase to the business license fee in order to hire the mental health professional. And the other was a 1% increase on our city's utilities in order to fund for firefighters. My recommendation would be that we bring the business license fee back to the level it would be at if we hadn't added the additional amount for the MHP and fund that through this purview. I do believe that utility tax needs to stay. And we can speak to the reason a little bit longer, but it comes, it really is about ensuring that we are eligible for other funding sources. So that was one mechanism that the city hadn't taken advantage of. And it caused us to kind of be unsuccessful when searching for external funding sources. So I think it's good to keep that mechanism in place, but I would ask council if we want to perhaps reevaluate the increase we made for the mental health professional. There has been no determination made on the final result of our conversation with Sam Transit, but we are sitting in November and I have a feeling that at some point we may need to be looking for a replacement for those funding, that funding. We have two, two police officer positions that are right now hung up on, waiting for that agreement to be in place. And so I think it's a good backfill for that. It's also a good opportunity for us to shore up the declining buying power, purchasing power of the existing property tax levy, public safety levy. Essentially, as it loses buying power, it is the general fund that is, you know, picking up that needed capacity. And so it helps us to alleviate that pressure on the general fund. And I think one of the most important things is it allows us opportunity for some other really important programs and initiatives to grow. It is $5.5 million annually that can be dedicated to criminal justice. That frees up quite a bit of revenue in the general fund that we can allocate to some of our other important gaps, such as environmental sustainability, maintenance, code enforcement, things like that. The other place that I think that there is, there is value added is within those programs themselves. We have had a difficult time with recruitment and retention. And not only does this funding provide some dollars to help us really ramp up our efforts there, but it also demonstrates to potential police officers that we are an organization that believes in, you know, having the type of work environment that is desirable. So, you know, we are looking to implement some of the best practices to be proactive in how we are engaging with the community. The other thing is that one of the requirements of this funding is that we share information. We document, we share, we learn. And there is no better way to get better than through that type of information. We do this ourselves anyways, but this gives us the benefit of learning from other organizations. Right now, we have the benefit of Chief Lowe being very active on, can you go back for me? On, on many regional efforts and state efforts. And by taking advantage of this funding source, we show alignment with what the state is hoping to achieve, and I believe that we will maintain our seat at that table. I chose to write these in terms of value and positive, but I think you can expect sort of the reverse to happen if we don't move forward with some component of it. There is some additional impacts or value to our fiscal health. In conversations with our insurance broker, it is likely that we would see a reduction in our premiums. We also would start to see, hopefully, a reduction in some of the claims that we have. We also, as I was speaking to a moment ago regarding the utility tax, it allows us to access other external funds and compete for them without being sort of kicked out because we haven't taken advantage of a revenue opportunity that was there. And this can come in the form of legislative action. It can come in the form of grants, really any type of external competitive process. And then I think that there is value to the community. This gets them the programs that they're looking for. It allows us to align with a lot of the external organizations that really focus on criminal justice rights. And it allows us to be in alignment with our regional partners and continue to participate in some of the cost sharing and regional planning that goes on within that realm. The cumulative impact on a Redmond taxpayer, with all that we know regionally, is $323 annually without the King County TBD, which I just am not sure sort of which way that's going to go. There is an additional burden that has been placed on our taxpayers because of the passage of the King County Parks Levy. That is $196 per household per year. So my recommendation for council is that we consider this revenue option. I recommend that we move forward with only adjusting the business license fee for just CPI next year and reducing it back down from that $1.30 we added. I ask that we schedule a public hearing in order to engage with the community, January, February timeline, and meet with council after to get direction. I would hope that we would, after council's review, be able to implement the tax, which does take a bit of time to get through the Department of Revenue and start the collection in 2026 to be allocated with the budget. Once we know council's direction, I think that there is also some items that we would submit for the grant opportunity as well that would be one time in expense. So any questions?
Thank you. And this is the last part of this very robust presentation from our finance director. So I think, I'll just note, I think this is a deep discussion for the council on what we'd want to do, but let's do a go-around of initial questions or comments on this and to give us a sense, especially on potential timeline and follow-up. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I'm definitely interested and I appreciate seeing the Redmond Police Recommendation Staffing Level slide. I was interested in the last bullet point on the first, on the first bullet point is Washington State is 51st in the nation for number of police officers. What is the 51st state? Is it, is it D.C.? Is, like, what are we counting as that 51st? Do we, do we know?
Chief Lowe, are you available? Calling a friend?
I am. So we rank 51st out of the 50 states, so there is, there is not a 51st state, but of the 50 states, we, we are 51st, meaning that's how low the numbers are in the state of Washington overall.
So are we, are we including D.C.? Are we including Guam? What are, what is the other entity that puts us below the 50 states?
So there is no 51st state. It's stated in the sense of we are recognized as 50 states, but for the state of Washington, the number is below all 50 states.
So should that read 50th? Sorry, I feel like I need a flowchart here.
Okay, sure, we can make it 50th. We'll, we'll call it a typo or a mistake on my part. It's just how it's referred to because of the number. So we're saying if you look at the 50 states, the state of Washington is below all 50 states. So it's just to get emphasis. Yes, we are dead last. We're below last. We're below all 50 states.
Okay. Thank you for the information. I definitely appreciate, and this is a conversation you and I've had over the years about how our staffing level is, is lower than where, where it's anticipated to be. And I appreciate the additional information on this slide. Could you speak a little more to the Uniformed Crime, the FBI Uniformed Crime Reporting and how that would function?
So with UCR, so that's the National Reporting System, you know, for crimes. And that is just a recommendation. So it all, it often gets asked, what is the standard or what is the number? There is no agreed-upon standard or number, so we tried to provide an overview both from a state perspective and a national perspective, showing that obviously if you went with the UCR number, they're recommending, you know, 2.2 to 2.4 officers per thousand, whereas our state average is 1.36. Trying to be, you know, I'll say realistic, but also trying to frame the conversation around what occurs within public safety. So we should be somewhere between, you know, one and a half, because obviously you can't have, you know, 0.36 of an officer. So we should be somewhere around one and a half to two officers per, per thousand, you know? And so we, as a city, have to decide, you know, what that number is. But again, just trying to provide, you know, some perspective or some points of comparison.
Okay. So if I may, the FBI data point doesn't necessarily pertain to the Redmond budget. It's just another data point showing Washington State statistics.
Yes, a point of comparison.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I appreciate the recommendation and I definitely want to think on it. I'm always happy to support our small businesses, especially with that business license fee reduction. So I very much appreciate the recommendation that's put in front of us.
Thank you. And I'm just, just for the sake of time in this discussion, since I think there, there are a lot of details within this part of the presentation that I think we could have a discussion on. I guess I would ask that council members to comment if, from my perspective, I think we probably will want to have another deeper conversation touch on this, potentially as a separate study session item just to talk. This was a good introduction, but, but just to see if folks are good with this timeline or perhaps if we might prefer to schedule like a study session to go deeper on this in January of 2026 before moving forward to the public hearing, just so that way we could kind of dig into a lot of these details. Happy to also hear people's kind of high-level reactions, but I just wanted to put that out there as, as an option. So. So, we don't have to dig into every detail tonight. Um, Councilmember Stewart.
Sure. Well, I'm not ready for a hearing, um, and I think for the, the reasons, this is actually our third or fourth touch on the topic, because we've, we've had a conversation a bit. One of the ideas that has come up in committee is, um, putting this conversation in with the budget next year because of the two work, work of two subcommittees in the prior biennium. The first was to solve with Director Cochran, solve for the gap that was in the levy. And with Director Cochran's amazing help, we did that. And then there were some enhancements that we wanted to make, including those that were recommended by the Alternative Crisis Response Subcommittee. That is in part what drove the additional revenues that we are currently collecting and not spending because we have those positions on hold. If we eliminate the business tax, we also eliminate the ability for that MHP position to come back with the funding source that we established in this biennium. I also want to put on the table that, you know, we as members of SCA signed onto a letter asking the county to slow down on their consideration of the transportation benefit district sales tax that is the exact same size as this one. We asked them to do that because of the, um, financial hit that our community has been taking and folks feel, folks are, you know, times are tough and paychecks are being eaten away by inflation. So, that was a direction we gave and a request that we gave of King County for a tax of the exact same size. So, I think that either there's more work to do here, or it's good to put the conversation in a comprehensive conversation with the next budget cycle, um, so that we can understand how is the levy doing and have a, uh, if we need an, if we need additional revenue to fund additional growth, then to have that in a, um, comprehensive conversation. That's, that's where I'm at on this.
Other comments or questions on this? Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. I, I'm, I would love to go a little bit deeper on, on the, the details of it, um, before we do go to a public hearing on it. And if we can do that in, in January, that would be fabulous.
I'm not seeing other hands raised, so I'll, I'll weigh in. I, I guess I, I kind of put my finger on the scale in suggesting that, but I, I do agree with some, with my colleagues in that I don't think we're going to be ready to go right away to a public hearing in January. I, I think, one, we should discuss whether it, it is the business license fee or utilities if we were to make a change, because we have been hearing a lot from our residents about the utility, uh, burden, um, given, given other types of, of rates as well. And, and I think we should have that discussion if we were going to make any adjustments. Two, I think we should discuss whether or not we want to do this at this time or wait until the budget, as Councilmember Stewart noted. And then I think, three, I would be interested, when we come back to talk about this, is you mentioned that because we already technically do, do have a, a sales tax, we could potentially apply for grants. So, I would be interested in whether we could maybe do the grant part of that process in 2026 while waiting to have a budget discussion on the sales tax piece of it. And then I, I, because I, I think the, the big part to unpack as well is all the slides that you just shared, of all the potential options of things we could fund or we might want to fund, and that does seem like that might be a budget process. But if there are some things that are kind of on the table that are, that we see as gaps right now, um, that align with our council's priorities, we could have that conversation sooner, in my opinion. But anyway, those, those are kind of all the different items that I think are the reasons why I'd support us, having another touch on this in January before, uh, deciding if we, what it is that we would even put towards a public hearing.
I've got just a couple of questions. I think I, it would be helpful at some point to, um, meet with, um, council to understand sort of what it is that I can bring back in, um, January to provide sort of another level to this conversation. Just help me understand specifically what it is that you are seeking to understand or, or discuss. The other question that I have is, right now, um, we are in the process of getting our ordinances through for 2026. Included in your packet was the business tax or business license ordinance that would adhere to the decisions made in the budget process. And so, question for tonight is, um, should that just move on to consent? Because we do have still, you know, a CPI adjustment to make. And so, um, we need to get that through. And we can always look at adjusting that business license fee back down in the next budget, but we need some kind of direction on how to move forward for 26.
Councilmembers? I'll ask your opinions. Councilmember Stewart?
I am, uh, comfortable moving forward with the business license decisions as we made at the beginning of the biennium because of the deep amount of work that we put into them. I have another comment, but I'll, I'll wait till we come back around.
Great. I will just say, I, I concur. We spent a, a lot of time on it, um, and we can reopen that discussion, but I think it's a big discussion. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I would say because it's a decision we previously made, that yes, but I absolutely want to revisit it.
Are you all right with it being on consent next week?
As, as we had budgeted. Thumbs up? Anyone against it?
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Mayor Bernie?
Yeah, I, I'm curious if we can dig a little deeper on, um, I think one of the areas that I, um, long ago that I realized, um, that was important is to take the, use the tools that the legislature gives us in order to be eligible for a lot of things. Would it be helpful if we dug a little deeper on, um, some of those things to help clarify if we, what, what, what's the repercussions if we don't take advantage of some of these things? Would that be helpful?
I think that would be helpful. I would also say, um, our finance director did a wonderful job presenting about 20, 20 slides on this of, of potential places we could invest this. If we were to say, oh, we're going to tax our, our public, I think we have to have like a really clear kind of business case of, these are the things that we're going to put them in and this is why. And so, I think it'd be better, like, if, if you could come back with some of those specifics and if council members wanted to send feedback before that next conversation and where they would want to see that, should we decide to do that, um, either now or in our next budget, then I think that would also be a helpful.
Great.
Piece of information.
And then clarity on the legislature's intent.
Yes, both.
Okay, all the, kind of all of the more specific, more specificity on those things to help get clarity.
Yeah, because I, I will say, I think one of our, our things we've asked for, for a while was more funding for training for officers. You know, even since when I started on the council, having more training for de-escalation, type bias training, those types of things. This is a mechanism we could do that with, for example. So, understanding, for example, how well funded do we think we are on that? What's that gap there would be something I would wonder about. And, you know, could we go after a grant or would we want to add, you know, tax funding for that? I think would be really important.
Okay.
Any other comments? Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. I'm really interested, uh, we, we've had a lot of, of conversation in community around, um, the concept of right sizing a department. And, uh, you, as our population increases, are we right sized? Also, are we right sized given, um, the climate that we had in 2020 and moving forward? What does that even mean? And it's not, I, I don't think that it's so simple as, you know, our population is increasing, so therefore, you know, our, our uniformed officers need to increase. And I don't know, right? Like, I don't know what the answer is. And by no means am I suggesting, you know, well, you know, go as is. I'm not saying that whatsoever. But where, where is, is our, 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 our recommended number now based on information that we have now that we didn't before, based on technology that we have now that we didn't before? Also with the conversations that we're having around our data privacy and the technology that we have.
Right.
So, I think that there's, there's so many things for us to take into consideration right now, given this topic. So, if, if we could, and I don't know where those, that answer lies with right sizing being the concept, but, um, just knowing that, that there's more things than, than just one or two lovers.
We'll highlight some additional drivers, um, for that need. Thank you. I've got some, um, thoughts on how to put that together, but please reach out if you have other ideas or needs.
Councilmember Stewart, I'll let you have the last word, then we're going to move on.
Sure. I appreciate the conversation. I, um, agree that there is more information that the council needs from community in what to fund, including how to fund, what to fund from the community. I understand that it's important to use the tools that the legislature gives us, and at the same time, the legislature needs to give us better tools. And, um, I appreciate that we continue to keep that, uh, top of mind in our legislative agenda, um, and need to continue working with the legislature to right-size the tax system in our state. And I have a pretty perfect record of not increasing sales taxes. So, I just will actually, as the conversation has gone on and folks have expressed a greater level of comfort, I'm really uncomfortable with the new sales tax. And so, I just want to be pretty clear about that, um, before a lot gets scheduled, just because clarity is kindness, and we've talked about that before. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, hopefully, I give you some direction on the next touch. I think the takeaway is that I wouldn't say you have any sort of consensus on this at the moment, so bringing back some more information for us to discuss this, while not necessarily us moving to a fully baked piece, will be important. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we still have, uh, three other items on the agenda, so we're going to, we're going to move along here. The next item on the agenda is the 2025 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan Draft Document Review. And Jenny Liebeck, our Sustainability Program Manager, will introduce this item.
Great. Good evening, council. Thank you so much for having us here. So, with me this evening are my colleagues, Micah Bonkowski, our Sustainability Program Administrator, um, and then Valeria and Erin, Valeria Cosgrove and Erin O'Meara. They're our sustainability coordinators, and we're instrumental in, um, this, the plan development as well. So, when we started this process at the beginning of the year, um, we set out to create a plan that was easy to understand, aligned with Redmond 2050, um, and really helped us prioritize our efforts to maximize our impact. And so, we're really excited to, um, be here with you tonight to discuss the full draft plan of the updated 2025 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, which we hope gets us closer to that, um, vision. And so, this is our third study session, um, on the 2025 ESAP. And then with each of these conversations that we've had with council, we've slowly been building the updated plan together. So, in the spring, we discussed our community engagement approach and the priorities for the plan update. In the summer, we got your feedback on the new framework for the plan and what we're calling our five big moves. And then in September, we reviewed the specific strategies and actions to keep us on track towards our goal of carbon neutrality. And today, we're bringing all of those pieces together as we review the full draft of the 2025 ESAP. So, again, the, the draft document was included in your meeting materials, um, and for, if there are any members of the public that are listening as well, um, the meeting materials included a Word document. We have updated the Let's Connect page with a, a designed, uh, plan, and that was also sent to council via email. So, again, each of our past conversations touched on, um, elements of the plan. And so, today what we're going to highlight are the areas where we've either had lighter touches with council or there have been updates since we last connected. And so, this includes, uh, reviewing some of the stakeholder feedback we received in September as a result of our outreach on the draft strategies and actions that were published. And we'll review the data analysis that helped us really narrow our priorities, um, and quantify our pathway to carbon neutrality. And then we'll touch on how we're planning to implement and report on the plan, and then close out with, uh, discussion with council. And so, with that, I will hand it over to Micah.
Good evening, council. So, to recap, and for those at home, uh, the plan is structured around these five big moves that you see on this slide here. These are the big moves we're prioritizing to really, really move the needle on greenhouse gas emissions reductions and to increase the resilience of our community to the changes that are already happening due to climate impacts. Of our total greenhouse gas emissions, building energy and fossil use make up about 70%, so that covers those first two big moves. Transportation makes up 23% and waste makes up 7%. And within this structure, we have 10 strategies that guide how we work toward these big moves. And we've narrowed it down to 62 actions we'll be taking over the next five years to keep us on track towards our overall goal of carbon neutrality by 2050, uh, which is in alignment with the Paris Climate Agreement. Since we were last before council, we closed public comment on the draft strategies and actions, and we offered a lot of opportunity for feedback and caught a good amount of community input on the plan actions. We held multiple office hours, uh, open office hours, um, engagement activities with our CBOs that we had contracted to do engagement on this process, and we held stakeholder meetings on each of the different groups of the five big moves. We formally consulted with the tribes to help us refine these actions. We requested formal consultation from six tribes. We got responses from three with substantive recommendations from two of the tribes. Uh, the tribes in particular were very supportive of the plan with recommendations that matched their priorities and were putting together a response to those two letters that will be going out to them probably next week. One of the things that we heard from the tribes, the public and this council, uh, was that we needed to restate our commitment to natural systems, that it was too small a part of this draft of the plan. The community, we heard, is proud of the natural setting of Redmond and really wants to protect it. We heard strongly from the community that they're very interested in sustainability and they really want to learn how they can take action, but they expressed that there are some barriers to taking that action. Most common barriers were affordability of some of the solutions and lack of knowledge of the solutions. And we feel like this provides a really good path as we continue engaging the community when we implement this plan to provide that education on how they can take those actions. In response to the feedback, we also edited the narrative in the plan and strengthened some parts of it, including the Big Move Five, adding the natural, uh, natural element back into it more than it was before. We added two new water actions, three new natural systems actions, one new community resilience action, one new energy action, and one new resilient building materials action. And as Jenny said, in the packet, there's a matrix that go into more detail on the specific changes we made based on the comments that we heard.
So, um, as Micah noted, the plan, uh, has been rooted in community engagement, but it was also heavily informed by a really robust, uh, data analysis. And so, we quantified the estimated greenhouse gas emission reductions from the actions just to ensure that we were putting, um, putting forward a plan that keeps us on track towards our goal of carbon neutrality by 2050 for the Redmond community. And so, that analysis is visualized here, and, and the key takeaways that I just want to point out for council is, um, first, that all five big moves are extremely critical to our strategy, all for, for different reasons. You know, whether that be explicit greenhouse gas reductions, advancing equity, um, or just building community around these topics. You know, we're investing our time and resources into each of these, and they're all very, very important pieces of the puzzle. I think the important, second important takeaway from this is, um, that existing buildings work, um, and ensuring that, uh, we have clean energy to power those buildings really presents a very big opportunity for us over the next five years. And so, that's why you'll continue to see us scaling up our Energy Smart East Side Residential, Decarbonization Program, um, and also launching a new program to help commercial buildings reduce their energy waste as well. Um, third, you'll notice that the, um, new buildings under Big Move Two here are a small portion of our greenhouse gas emissions, and that's because, um, the Redmond 2050 code changes are expected to create more highly efficient transient, transit-oriented, um, developments. And so, we're avoiding, um, a lot of emissions from being produced in the first place. So, we, if we did not have those policies in place, you'd see that wedge be much larger and present a much larger opportunity or need for us in the future. And finally, um, when we do this kind of analysis, we have to make assumptions, and, and one of those, um, more important assumptions reflected here is that PSE will provide us with 80% clean energy by 2030, um, which they are required to do per state, uh, per the state's Clean Energy Transformation Act. And so, we, we recognize, and, you know, we've talked about this before, that this transition is challenging, um, and that's why you're going, you're, you'll see or you saw within the plan, um, that we're putting a bigger focus on actions to help mitigate grid capacity constraints, um, and just, again, do our part in that transition. And so, there are, um, many important sustainability metrics that we are tracking through the plan, but I'd say like our overarching key metric is our greenhouse. plan, but I'd say like our overarching key metric is our greenhouse gas emissions. And so just to drive home the point, so the actions that are proposed in the draft plan that's before you, they keep us on track to achieve our community greenhouse gas reduction goal, again, which is consistent with the state and global climate commitments, as Micah noted. And then, and as I mentioned in the last slide, achieving our 2030 target in particular for the community is dependent on Puget Sound Energy meeting their clean energy mandates. On the city operations side, so while we are seeing a significant reduction in emissions, so we've reduced our emissions in half since 2018, the plan does not keep us on track to achieve council's ambitious vision of carbon neutrality by 2030. And that was established through your climate emergency declaration. So what we've proposed within the plan, it still continues to maintain the city's commitment to leading by example, but it just does so in a way that balances the fact that emissions from city operations, they account for half of a percent of our overall community emissions. And so we're trying to propose a balanced approach that maximizes impact.
As we updated this plan, a lot of questions were asked about what is the city doing, you know? So it's really important to acknowledge all of the work that's happened over the last five to 10 years to really embed sustainability into a whole host of other functional plans. I think, you know, Director Cochran's presentation about how those functional plans lead up to the overall goals of the city is a perfect way to show that alignment. And how those functional plans and strategies have incorporated sustainability is just part of that, including the incredible work that was done to embed it into the 2050 Comprehensive Plan Update. I like to say sustainability is a team sport, and it really includes the important work across all of the city departments and our community as a whole. There's critical sustainability work being done outside of this Environmental Sustainability Action Plan that's included in all these plans listed here. And it's really becoming part of the fabric of Redmond and how it operates as a city. The fact that sustainability is so incorporated into all these plans is part of what allowed us to focus this plan really strongly on what will advance greenhouse gas emission reduction and what will increase the community resilience, those two main overarching goals. These plans really show how parks, fire, public works, and planning have all really moved and continued to move sustainability in the city. After adoption, we'll plan to continue the cadence of updates to council that we had in the first ESAP with quarterly implementation updates that are qualitative, updates to the Parks and Environmental Sustainability Committee. We'll have an annual Year of Action Report that'll cover the quantitative and qualitative updates that we've achieved over the course of the year and the progress that we've made on all of the actions. And then we'll be doing biannual GHG inventories to track progress. And these will be integrated into our annual Year of Action Report.
Great, so again, the draft plan is currently out for public comment, and we are on track to have the final 2025 ESAP to council for proposed adoption on December 2nd. And so this evening, what we were hoping to hear from council is, you know, whether there are any gaps that we need to address before that December 2nd meeting and to get direction as to whether council would like to refer the plan to the December 2nd consent agenda. But before we did dive in on the discussion, so we did include an issues matrix from the September 23rd study session. We just wanted to confirm, you know, did the responses that we provide answer all of council's questions? And if, just gauge from you whether there were any of those issue or items that we needed to revisit this evening before we dove in on the discussion. And that's the end of our presentation.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the really hard work on this, the community engagement, and the thoughtful response to council's suggestions as well as the community's suggestions. Great to see those updates. Council, I'll ask, does anyone have any pending follow-up on the issues matrix? Or any other gaps or questions that you would like to address before we talk about plan adoption? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Thanks for all the work on this. I know it's a very big lift, and it's fun to see this coming to another vote. First, I wanted to recap for council's awareness that Councilmember Nueva Camina and I were able to meet with staff around the water policy that we'd brought forward a while back. And if you'll look at Big Move Number Two, Action 2.9, that is really in response to all of that conversation and all of that work, we moved forward with kind of rolling that into this work. So it's really about looking at land use policy around bottled water production, and we added data centers to that conversation, since that's a big thing that is something for us to be thinking about now in the water usage. And it was brought up that we don't necessarily have the land for a data center, but we don't know what the future looks like in my mind, and we don't know what return to office will look like for someone, say, like, big tech companies in our community that may have space but not people. So really wanted to make sure we flagged the data center potential for a future outlying potential issue. So appreciate that being folded in. The one question that I had is that PSC number of 80%, do we have contingency plans for if they are unable to meet those benchmarks? What, how's that conversation gone with you all internally? Just kind of want to talk that one out.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So when we first embarked on this planning process, Micah and I had an explicit sit-down with Puget Sound Energy just to talk through what kind of assumptions we should be integrating into the plan. And in that conversation, they, you know, expressed that, yes, this is a challenging, going to be a challenging target for them to hit, but that they were on track to hit that. And we know that that narrative has evolved even as of a couple of weeks ago, right? So we're seeing that change. So I will say what we have proposed within the plan is recognizing that the transition is hard, right? We've integrated new actions to try and do our part, if you will, at the local level. And we're also undertaking some efforts now, like our grid capacity study that's looking at the distribution level, so a little bit lower than just the amount of energy that's out there. But this is a challenge, and I don't know that it is necessarily anything that we need or want to address within this plan, but I do think that the actions give us a foundation to continue to advocate with PSC, to make sure that we are, you know, working in partnership with them to work towards those goals, and that it needs to be something that we can, you know, potentially, we can bring that back with each of our annual updates, or we can find some way to kind of monitor that progress. But it's not something that's, you know, unique to Redmond, and I think everyone will have their eyes on PSC and that work, so.
I think that's a, that's a good catch, because it's an area that we have very little control over, other than advocating to continue the trend of decarbonization. It was a matter, it was definitely a subject last week when we were able to go to the local leaders conference and talk with climate leaders around the world about what they're seeing in their cities as well. And this was a topic for everybody, whether it was dealing with data centers and the use of power and energy, or just how do we manage our own utility, because some of the cities have their own power utility. And so I think it's, it is definitely an area where it's of concern, not just for Redmond residents, but for everyone, about where we're going in the future with energy production and what does that look like. And so I think it's just something we need to keep our eye on and advocate for and think a little more long-term about what the possibilities are and how we can influence that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. And that was to the point, the question that I had was, you know, 2030 is four years. I originally thought, oh, it's five years away. No, we're midway through November. It's four years away. And if they, because the discussion is that the likelihood that they're not going to hit those goals, and then what specifically, where would we be missing our target in our plan? How specifically would that impact us? And then have we been thinking about those contingencies and where that's going to go at that point? So, but just echoing the importance of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for the incredible work on this and also the awesome demonstration of what it looks like to go out where community is. We saw you guys all over the place, and then integrate feedback that you heard, and to have such an engaged advocacy, or excuse me, advisory committee along the way, too. So this was one of the big, big items. Speaking of the big five, we probably had our own big five of what to get done in 2025, and this was one of them. And it's on track because of your awesome management. So, thank you. There are a few things I love about this plan. We have been talking a lot about them in the work to respond to what we heard at K4C, get ready for the rate summit on Friday. So Jenny and I have been having several conversations on that. I just want to say how much I love the focus on, I think it was slide number six, if I caught it correctly. It's also on page 25 of the materials. We have this awesome new infographic that tells the story about where our emissions come from and the actions, the size of the actions that we need to take. I am frequently told, but transportation's the biggest emitter in your city, and it's not. And we have a plan for what to do with that. I can't wait to see the results of the grid capacity study, and I think some of the conversation that has come up in the room tonight, though, like, all of those questions should also come back then. So I look forward to that conversation. I think it was in February. So just an incredible job well done, and for those who have been so engaged in this process, thank you. I really look forward to adopting this next week.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, I will jump in here. Following up on the 2030 discussion, but more broadly for our city, I think a piece of feedback I heard from community, and that jumped out to me, is that in the plan, we do acknowledge that we're not going to get to the goal we originally set, but when will we? You know, exactly what is that going to look like, especially for municipal operations? I think we set that ambitious goal, and when we did the zero-carbon strategy, which, Ms. Liebeck, I know you led us on that a couple of years ago, we did chart a path to say, this is how we could get there, even if, say, we couldn't green everything in our fleet, or if we couldn't transform every building, this is, you know, between offsets and other things, how we'd get to net zero. And so I am wondering, kind of, what, where does the goalpost move to? Not just saying, we're not going to make the four years from now goalpost, but actually, I think it would be useful for us to set a reasonable goal for that, and to be realistic of like, this is the way in which we might achieve a carbon neutrality within the shorter term. This is what we might do in the longer term, because we know, for example, the changes that might be needed to the Public Safety Building or City Hall, you know, based on a lot of our assessment of city buildings, that's going to be a further out thing, right? Or our fleet, doing the full greening of the fleet, that is going to take time. But how do we kind of track or think about getting closer to those goals sooner? What does that look like?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it would require additional analysis that we have not done through this planning process. So I think I would have to say that we would need to come back to you with a recommendation as to how we could recalibrate that goal and what would be realistic, so.
Great, and I think, I think that's, that's fine with me, and I think recognizing we're not going to make the mark, but we have the 2050 goal. But also, in the 2050 goal, we are setting a goal for our entire community, saying, we're all going to achieve this. And we definitely, if we want to do it ourselves, and we want the community to do it, then, you know, we have to hold ourselves accountable to that and be clear of what are going to be those kind of benchmarks along the way. So I just look forward to the follow-up on that discussion and being able to share that out. Wanted to say thank you for the follow-ups, especially on natural resources. I think there's a summary in the matrix of, Councilmember Critts are asked about more salmon, but what I meant was more natural resources, water, et cetera. So, but I loved seeing some of those additions and hearing that we heard that feedback from the community and from others. I did hear from some folks asking whether we should have like a whole call-out section around water, but I think it is nicely integrated into the ways that we have the five big moves with some greater emphasis, so appreciate that. And then, I guess, last thing that I wanted to ask about in terms of some of the metrics, because I didn't have a matrix item on this, and it was noted that we'll continue our dashboard reporting out. It wasn't totally clear to me, are there any, oops, are there any new metrics? Or are there any changed metrics that we'll be doing, or any new types of reporting as well?
Yeah, so what we, within the plan itself, if you look on the action tables, we proposed metrics for each, I would say we refined the metrics for each of the big moves. So in our last, in the 2020 ESAP, we had, I think, around 25 key performance indicators, and we really tried to recalibrate those with this plan to ensure we're collecting data that's going to really inform our programming and be a good indicator of whether we're on track. And so that's, that's what you'll see within each of the big moves. And again, it's just underneath each of the action tables for community and city operations. And so those will be the indicators that we'll be updating with our dashboard and reporting on publicly through our annual reports that we provide to council.
Thank you very much. And I am realizing you did include a column that says "new" in one part of the column, so appreciate that there. But I guess it would be helpful to get clarity on what we might see disappearing from any other reporting.
I see, yeah, no, I understand your question. Yeah, what we can do is provide a follow-up where we note the indicators that we were tracking before and kind of where they ended up, either in this planning process, or again, what we're proposing is new. So we can definitely provide that comparison to you, so you can see that. And if there are metrics that you want to see us reporting on, we absolutely can. That's, it's all, you know, fair game and open, so.
Yeah, I think it's great, and I'm sure you put a lot of thought into it. I think it'd be helpful to see the comparison and then understand if there were any of the specific reasoning for that change.
If you're okay with it, what we can do is provide that analysis to you just via email, if that's all right? We can send that email to council.
Thank you. Thank you. But overall, I really think this is exciting, excited for these five big moves. Any other comments or questions from the council? All right, so we'll go to the last question, which is, is there any objection to putting this on consent on December 2nd? All right. We'll then see you on December 2nd for a vote on this. Thank you so much for all the hard work.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the next item on our agenda. I'll let everyone transition here for a second. The fourth item on the agenda is the council appointment process. And council leadership has been in discussion with our mayor and COO, who have also been in discussion with our HR director about this process. So I'll let our COO Melissa Files kick us off for this discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, and good evening, council. On Friday, I sent you a packet about the council vacancy recruitment process. So it's a proposed process. In that packet was the process itself, a timeline of council actions, as well as a communications plan. Excuse me. Yeah, it must be the seat. Council has 90 days to fill a vacancy, which would take us into February 1st. The process includes, so on November 19th, we would start the application process, excuse me, would start the application process. There has already been some communications out there that, you know, we will be beginning a process and that we will be doing communications of kind of applications, what that process entails. We will run it, much like we do a recruitment for employees. So HR is responsible for getting the, getting the notices out there, advertising, bringing the applications back in into our system. We plan on getting all those applications back in by January 2nd. And then council will start a ranking and interviewing process. We have set aside January 13th a study session to do interviews of the candidates, and then coming back on January 20th with the top candidates. Council will look at their qualifications during executive session and then come back in. The plan says that you will come back in to the meeting and talk about those candidates and vote on the number one candidate that you would like to be seated. and vote on the number one candidate that you would like to be seated. That we are also proposing on that same night to swear in the new council member. So we also have this item on the committee of the whole next week. Wanted to give you some time to look over the process, the timeline, ask any questions that you have, so that we can begin the recruitment process. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and Catherine is here as her department will be running the application process.
Right, thank you so much. And I realize I didn't give the context for the listening public. In case everyone hasn't been as deeply following this as we are, on November 4th, Councilmember Salah Houdin resigned from his position, and we'll look forward to having him as our partner in the legislature in this upcoming year, in the 48th district. But it means that we do have a vacancy, and the clock, the 90-day clock began on November 4th, so that gives us until February 1st to fill the vacancy. So just wanted to give, give that little piece of context. I'd say, we talked about what would be a schedule that would allow council to be able to do this, using mostly scheduled meetings, to be able to do that, since we have a lot of other retreats and kind of special meetings and other things that'll be coming up throughout the, the first part of the year. And we do think that we have time currently, based on what's scheduled on the January 13th study session, to clear that out, so we can do a lot of interviews. I think a couple of questions that we wanted to get feedback from the council on before finalizing this process and going out to opening up applications, is, you know, overall feedback on this, but a couple of different pieces, is in some jurisdictions, they've gotten dozens of applications to some of these positions. I think the City of Black Diamond had over 75 applications for a single position. So we'd recommend having, putting a cap on the total number of applicants that we would actually interview, and 10 to 15 is, is what's put in here, maximum of 15. But wanted to get the council's feedback on what that cap should be, because I think we should decide that in advance of collecting the application, so people know what's going to be kind of the tier of interviews. I'll also underline here that we have, that we will be able to do the review with, with certain information redacted, so we can try to do a less biased initial screen on the initial applicants. And then the other question, so one is, what should be the cap? Does that seem like the right number, 15, 10 to 15? Or, and also, do the questions that would go out for the application look good to council? Or is there anything else that, that council members would ask? There are also interview questions included here. Those are, I think, just suggestions for us, but wanted to make sure that we get both of those right, so that way we can get the application out. Go ahead, Mayor Bernie.
Yeah, we've talked extensively about all of this. Took the old process, the one time that we've done it in recent memory of appointing someone, we took that information and then talked with other jurisdictions about what they've done. So we've tried to kind of make it Redmond, but take advice of others. The 10 to 15, if you kind of, if you've been able to look through, we have a ranking system, like a one, two, three. Usually what happens is, there's, there's a definite separation between that. So that's why we didn't want to say just 10 or definitely 15, but we feel like there's probably some space in there. Although council might just decide, we're going to do 10, that's it, or whatever you're going to do. Happy to do that, but wanted to give you an idea of why, why we took a look at that. And then I think the other thing that is good for the community to know is, we started to look at the January calendar, because we have to get it done pretty much in January, and there's some holidays, there's some other exciting things happening, we have AWC days. So we have, there's a lot going on there, and we, we just figured that we rearranged the schedule, on the study session schedule, so you guys could do the interviews on the Tuesday, which if someone wants to be a council member, they have to be here on a Tuesday anyway, so felt like that felt well. So that's just some, a little bit of the background about it, in case the council's interested or the listening public's interested in kind of how we got to this process.
And I'll also note, you can see in here that we are going to have a candidate information session. So once the council comes up with the process that we want to do, the mayor will be hosting an information session, and I'll be there to be able to answer any questions from council leadership perspective, for the public to be able to come and learn about the process during the application period. Councilmembers are also welcome to be able to join and listen in on that as well. Although, let us know, so we don't end up with a quorum. But, and then, yeah, so I will stop there. Actually, I'll just read, since the listening public, I think this wasn't all attached to the item, I'll just read the potential application questions. Why do you want to serve the City of Redmond as a council member? What unique skills do you bring to the council member position? Please tell us about your service experience in the City of Redmond. Include volunteer time with organizations or works on border commissions. If selected as a council member, how will you ensure that you're prepared for the role and responsibilities? How do you view city staff and their commitment to the work they do? So those are just a couple of questions. We also got some input from our HR director, just to make sure that we didn't include questions that might in some way be too biased or leading or inappropriate. But curious to get the council's input. So we'll open it up. Councilmember Nuava Kamina.
Thank you. I'll kick us off, because the, the question that was first asked was, how do we feel about capping it at 10 to 15 interviewees? And for, for that number, I feel comfortable with capping it at the 15. I think that that gives us a good number of, of candidates, of qualified candidates to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
On that question, I think that that is reasonable also.
Any other comments? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, you asked for a lot of feedback, so we're just trying to keep it all organized.
Go ahead.
We are sharing the application process, or the application. So my first question was, what is the application? It looks like the application is a series of short answer questions. If I got that wrong, please do let me know. I think that something that is missing from this list is, well, first to back up and say, it's helpful if the council can understand, like, what is it that we're trying to test with this application? And how is that different than the interview? In the list of questions, whether we're talking about the application, or some of them were repeated in the proposed interview questions, I think it's important to ask about how one's service to date or experience to date has prepared you for this role. That's different than the way, that gets a different outcome than what is, has been suggested to us along the way. I also think that when we ask, for example, in this one, what are the unique skills you bring as a council member? I love that question, because I love working with interesting people. The job of a council member is quite defined, actually, and so there's a few skills we actually need to make sure that folks are strong in. But I do think it's helpful to understand what unique perspectives individuals could bring to round out Team Redmond, and I'm, I'm interested in that.
Mayor Bernie?
Yeah, I, I think that this is somewhat taken out of context, because you're not seeing, you know, the questions, the questions are on the application, but we also are giving out a lot of information about what is, what is this role? So they will, between the application itself, the information that's available, and then, you know, hopefully attending the virtual meeting that we're going to have about answering any people, anyone's questions, giving general information, that they'll have an understanding of what the role is, to your, to your point, like, how are you filling that role? How are, how would you be best to fill that role? And so that information will be attached with all of this, too.
Thank you. Director Laird.
Can I, I can share with you a little bit about the application itself. So what we're going to do is take a regular application and just winnow it down just a little bit, but we will still ask them what their work history is, and then we will also ask them for a resume and a cover letter, so you can get kind of a broader feel of who they are. And we will not include, I think you already know this, but the names or addresses of the candidates.
One follow-up question, just, it seems to me like the third bullet point gets at the question about service experience, and it might be with a slight rewording that we could get at what you're asking for, Councilmember Stewart, but I might be misinterpreting what you were asking for.
Yes, the question on the third bullet point asks, what have you done? The, the suggestion that I'm making will get you to, and how do I reflect on that? And that's prepared me to step into the role. This is, I should say also for the listening public and those who are tuning in to, to take this on, you are so brave. The person that we appoint is going to have to hit the ground running and be ready to go. And preparedness is something that is important, I think, in our, in our hunt for a future colleague.
Just a suggestion, and we can follow up on this, would be to say something like, please tell us about your service experience in the City of Redmond and how it has prepared you for this role. Would that cover that, or am I misinterpreting what you're asking? I apologize. I just want to go and make sure that we get the fine point on this, because it's, well, we can update the questions.
I think that you could. This question also limits, what is your experience in the City of Redmond? And I think that folks can have lots of experiences that compare, prepare them. So I was asking to broaden it. I, I, if you'd like to wordsmith it, we can. I'm just unclear of what the mandate is here.
We don't have to wordsmith tonight. I just, if, if we otherwise don't have a lot of other changes to questions, I thought we could get that clarity. Go ahead, Council Vice President Forsyth.
I think I'm on the same page as Councilmember Stewart on this one. If we could even just add "and beyond," and that way it captures city and potentially, they didn't live here two years ago, so maybe they served elsewhere.
Mayor Bernie?
Yeah, I, I think that there was an edit that was missed, that that was, it was not just their experience in the City of Redmond. It was like, what are your, what are your experiences that would lead you to this role? So.
Great, I think that gives good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. My question was actually regarding the requirements, and I'm sorry if I'm missing it. I just wanted to get clarity, this, this, this appointment will still have the, have lived in 98052 for a year, and that small little part of 98033 that is technically Redmond. Yeah, that is within the city limits.
In the city limits for at least a year and be a voter.
And be a voter, yes. So the application will clearly state-
And 18 years old.
Well, that's true, because you could be a voter, you're less than 18 if it's before an election.
And 18 years old, got it. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was going to be clearly stated in the application, so that we're not potentially having to exclude a bunch of resumes, of applications.
Go ahead.
So HR will, will receive all of the applications, and will verify all of that upfront. So you will only get applications that meet those standards.
Great.
Can I make a suggestion on the interview questions? And if this is wrong, you know, it's okay. But, so I'm assuming you're going to have some time to continue to think about the questions. What would be great is if we got edits from them. If you gave us edits to the questions, we can put those edits together and provide you a list of the questions. The other thing is, is sometimes what will suggest to hiring managers is, and a panel that interviews is, give us one or two of the top questions that you want to ask, and we make sure that we try to get all those questions on there. We do have to be careful how many questions are asked, because you don't have much time if you're interviewing up to 15 people. You don't want to be here all night, so.
Thank you. That's, that's a helpful suggestion. I do think, before we do the interview, it would make sense for the council to discuss what the priority questions are and what are kind of the general criteria that, that we might be looking for to be able to, to assess by. So we could, we can schedule more time. I think in this, tonight's session, we did want to assess whether we need another touch on this before we could open the application process, or if we could take some of the suggestions from tonight, give it to the staff, and then put it out there to, to get the application process rolling. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, one of my burning questions about this process, it's actually great that you're here, Director Laird. Individual council members, I'll speak for myself, but I assume it's the same for others, we have started to get a fair amount of personal outreach from interested applicants for this position. So when we are taking a lot of steps to be fair in this process, should council members be taking individual meetings with candidates at this time? And if so, what are the guardrails there? And curious to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, that's actually a really great question, because we want to make sure that everybody gets the same information. So what would be ideal is to actually refer them on to either human resources or the, the city, I mean, your office, yeah. Because, because we are going to have that informational, information to give to them. So it would be ideal if they could get it through that resource rather than just one-on-one. Now, you're also probably going to share maybe with them just what it's like to be a council member as far as, for example, just the time commitment. And I think it's okay to say a little bit of that, but I wouldn't go into a lot of detail. Yeah.
Okay, so I heard, we're all, we're, when we are getting personal outreach, the main objective then is to make sure that they're connected to the process, including the informational session on December 2nd. If we do take a meeting with them, we're happy to talk about our experience as a council member and what it takes to be prepared, but we are not interviewing them.
Correct, yeah. And if they, if they, let's see, you said December 2nd for the informational meeting? Yeah, right. So, but they can apply up to, till January 2nd, so we can always meet with them separately as well. So if they miss that, we can figure out a way to make sure that they get the information.
Our goal is to record it, so it'll be easily accessible online, even if they can't-
That would work.
-end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I sent in a few questions to Ms. Files earlier. I appreciate the answers to those. One of them was, well, two of them, one thought was, can we please post the names of people on the website as folks apply? And then the second question I had was, are we asking them also to do PDC filings? I know this is not really a mini-election, but that's some of the, the part that makes the actual election fair, is that we, if, as much as we can mimic that, that would be good.
Mayor Bernie?
In the information that we'll be giving them in the info session, we'll share all of the state-led, state laws that guide being an elected official, including the PDC information and all of that. So that will be part of it. Because it's not a campaign, there are no rules about fundraising or things like that. But, or if they did, they would have to use the PDC, but that's not, would not be the intent of this. But, but they will have to be aware of the, like, the financial disclosure filings and all of that. That will be, you know, a part of the information that they will get, that that's something that they have to do as, as an elected official.
Can they do that before they come to council?
I, F1s are only for people that are either running for office in the traditional sense or are an elected official, as far as I know.
And is that a requirement that we cannot add to our process?
Right. We have to follow state law with that.
We could probably make a more stringent process, that's what my question is.
You could, but I think that sharing with people the expectation that that's something they'd have to do if they were to become an elected official. The other thing you mentioned was to list the people's names. I think one of the things that we heard loud and clear from the council is, at least in the initial process, to remove names and any kind of identifying characteristics from the application, so that when you're reviewing them, you know, you don't have that bias. And so I just want to be clear on that, because that seems counter-information.
Yeah, thank you. I think it would make sense when we do choose the interviewees to be able to post that publicly, so that everyone knows, and since those will be public interviews for us to be able to do, so that way everyone can be aware of that. I think in terms of the, the public disclosure aspect, we could consider that, but I'm not, we could look into whether, you know, the state law even permits that. I, I don't think in terms of actually creating a barrier to people applying, since those forms are complicated and it may deter someone from even, like, taking the first step to, to apply. I don't think we want to create additional barriers. They will have to learn to do those things, should they be chosen. But I, I guess I'm, I'm not that interested in that at the moment. I guess I'll ask the other council members, is there interest in pursuing adding that addition? I see Council Vice President Forsyth.
I think it's a really interesting question, because it, it tells a lot about, potentially tells a lot about someone's external influence and motivation, but I don't think for this process, it makes sense, because I believe we would have to create our own process for it, because it's, it's not necessarily something that we could just ask- ask 15 candidates to go fill out an F1. We'd have to internally bring that information in and create our own process. And that, in the timeframe given, feels too cumbersome. But I definitely appreciate the thought process of wanting to know someone's financial disclosure, just like we all have to disclose. So I think it's a really interesting question and maybe something if there is an appointment in the future that we consider. But for this process, with given the timeframe, I'm not interested in pursuing it unless there is an easy solution per state law.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I also had a question in the materials. The interviews on the 13th are listed, and then the council will interview the top four candidates again on the 20th. There isn't an explanation on how the narrowing from the field gets to four.
So there will be, kind of, you'll go through a ranking process for, to review all of the applicants, and then you will interview those, and then you will come to some kind of consensus about, you know, what the top candidates are. At least that's the way we envisioned it.
So on January 13th, after completing the interviews in open session that same night, identifying who are the four we'd like to call back for January 20th?
Correct.
Okay.
Council Vice President Forsythe.
I have been batting around the idea of us using ranked choice voting to complete that narrowing down from potentially 15 to four. And I can help coordinate the backend of that as well, if needed.
Thank you. Mayor Bernie.
Yeah, that is actually what we did last time, which is, it ended up not being too complicated, but that was how we narrowed it down. And I can't recall if it was an open session or closed session. So I think we'll have to find out which way that actually legally goes. Cheryl's looking at me, so Cheryl will help us figure that out.
I will say thank you, Councilmember Stewart, for raising this. I think it isn't spelled out in the materials, and I don't think we have full clarity on how that voting mechanism at that stage happens, so we should clarify that before we move forward in this process. And we can follow up. Director Laird.
So with regards to that, is that something that we can help with as well? Because we can put together a matrix or however we want to do that so that you can then rank the candidates. But it would be, but we would like to know what your preference is and then follow that.
Does that, does anyone object to doing that if HR helps us to develop a ranked choice voting style vote? Councilmember Stewart.
I'm not sure I understand the alternatives, as it were. And I know we have time on the committee of the whole next week, so this would be one of those areas where I think the choice could matter a lot, and I'd like to understand my choices better. So I would be interested in seeing a little bit more material about the variety of options.
Yeah, and as noted, we do have time on committee next week. So if we want to come back with that and then maybe some updated interview questions, as well as any other pieces based on the feedback that we received tonight, I guess I'd also say if councilmembers in the interim have any other questions or ideas, please send those in and then we can, and the goal would be that by next week's committee, we could have consensus around what we want to include in the application and what we want the process to be that gets published. So that way everyone, we can share it out. It's very transparent and easy for everyone to follow along, and then we can advertise far and wide. I will also note that our communications team has come up with some plans around how they're going to advertise for this, and appreciate getting some information on that as well. Any other comments on this before we close this out, noting that we'll get another bite at the apple on committee next week? All right. Thanks, everyone. And to the listening public, look out. We will be, next week, we will decide on the exact date that we will set, but it will likely be later next week that we'll be opening that application. So it says November 19th is the proposed date, so look out for that, and we'll have a lot of city communications on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last item on our agenda is council talk time. Are there any items for council talk time? We really had a lot of talk tonight, so. Councilmember Nuava Kamina.
Yeah, I wanted to take a moment to address the recent public conversation about comments that I made regarding ICE activity here in Redmond. My remarks have circulated widely, often without the full context of the conversation in which was happening outside of chambers, in various conversations with community members, staff, community organizations. And I feel it important that I spoke directly to my colleagues, staff, and our community here in Redmond. And when I said that it was upon the community to fight back against ICE, I was not referring to physical confrontation or any unlawful behavior. I was speaking about the moral responsibility of our neighbors, our faith communities, our local leaders, to support one another when federal enforcement actions create fear and confusion in our city. Our police chief recently said on a radio interview that words matter, especially when they come from public officials. And on this point, I'm going to be clear, I agree wholeheartedly. Words matter, and so does intent. And in that moment, I was referring to community solidarity, rights education, emotional support, not violence or confrontation. And because our local police cannot legally intervene in federal immigration operations, both residents and officers are left powerless during those incidents. And what I meant by fighting back is ensuring that our community understands their rights, knows what lawful federal action looks like, and has access to trusted support when they feel unsafe. And recently, immigrants and non-immigrants alike have shared concerns about masked federal agents without physical identification appearing in our neighborhoods, most recently on Education Hill. Feeling that this piece that I spoke of, of being nonexistent or broken, concerns about walking their dog and getting caught up in the middle of it, concerns about parents worrying about trauma for their children may experience witnessing these events. Others fear being unintentionally caught up in operation that they don't understand. In a city where nearly half of our residents are foreign-born, this fear disrupts the trust and sense of stability that we work to protect. It is only heightened when federal agents do not give that professional courtesy of letting our local police know that their presence is here. Our chief also said that our police are here to keep the peace, and with that, too, I agree. And keeping the peace includes helping residents feel safe when federal actions create panic or confusion. And while Redmond Police Department cannot intervene directly, I do want to be clear about what I believe we should be considering right now when these incidents do happen. And of course, of course, Redmond Police should and will respond to 911 calls and remain visibly present in the area. Even if they can't engage in it, their presence means a lot to our community. And considering support to be deployed to support families and children that are experiencing fear and trauma when they are exposed to these incidents. And we must continue supporting our community in ways that are lawful, compassionate, and rooted in our shared values. Another statement that was publicly made was that both words and actions have consequences, and that is most definitely also true. And unfortunately, the consequence of my words being taken out of a larger context have been a wave of very graphic, very violent, deeply disturbing threats. Those have been sent by email, text messages, voicemails, social media. To a large extent, we've not seen a lot of that coming from our community here in Redmond or even throughout the East Side or throughout King County. They have made their way across from the nation, not just throughout the state. Regardless of political viewpoint, the level of hostility is not who we are as a community. And it's deeply sad that our public discourse has gotten to this point to where if they are willing to say these things to myself as a public figure or an elected official, which were, to say the very least, vitriol with racism and sexism, then what would they be saying to the average person? And I also want to remind our community who I am and where my values come from. I'm a United States Navy veteran and the daughter of a Vietnam veteran Marine who later served in law enforcement. I was raised to respect the uniform, the Constitution, and the duty to protect our neighbors. My advocacy is rooted in service, nonviolence, and a deep respect for the rule of law. At the heart of my comments is a commitment to the Fourth and Fifth Amendment, these rights to be free of unreasonable searches and seizures, and to the right of due process. Now, defending these rights is not defiance, it's actually patriotic. And it binds us together as Americans. Now, my day-to-day actions and relationships in this city and throughout the region reflect who I am, even when my words in the moment may not come out perfectly. I remain committed to serving Redmond with integrity, accountability, belonging, and stewardship, which are our city's shared values. Earlier, I said on a couple of occasions, and I feel that it bears repeating again, Redmond is a beautiful balance of head and heart. And Redmond is strong, any community is, because we stay together with those agreed-upon values. And I will continue to do exactly that. Thank you.
Well, I think we'll let Councilmember Nuava Kamina have the last word. And let me just say that I really appreciate being able to serve with you on this council and that threats and violence have no place in Redmond. And I appreciate serving on a council where we all have a deep dedication to the Constitution and to upholding those rights. All right. If there's nothing else for good of the order, this meeting is adjourned.